On and pull them forward and we'll get started here. I'd like to call the March 9th, 2020 meeting of the Town and Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission to order. Ms. Chiketti, would you please call the roll?
Mr. LaFlem.
Here.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Here.
Mr. Khan.
Here.
Mr. McPartland.
Here.
Mr. Darpino.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Present.
Chairman Walsh.
Here. Just make sure your microphones are on down there, okay? Please, here we go. Let's see, there are no minutes. They weren't ready for this meeting, so we'll postpone the minutes to the next meeting and we'll catch up on a couple at the next meeting. So we'll go right to the public hearing. Tonight, we have a public hearing regarding 2538 River Road for a special use permit, major subdivision. That's the location known as Kelts Farm. Ms. Chiketti, would you please read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that pursuant to zoning ordinance of the Town of Niskiuna, New York, and the applicable provisions of the town law of the state of New York, a public hearing will be held by the Planning, Boarding, and Zoning Commission of the Town of Niskiuna in the Town Board Meeting Room, 1 Niskiuna Circle, on the 9th day of March 2020 at 7:00 p.m. to consider an application from Joel Basalian for a major subdivision and an average density development special use permit at 2538 River Road formerly known as Kelts Farm relative to the following: For an application to create an average density development and major subdivision for 24 building lots at 2538 River Road as a mixture of twin-town homes and single-family houses. The property is located within the R1 zoning district. All parties in interest and citizens will be given the opportunity to be heard by the Planning Board at the public hearing to be held as aforementioned by order of the Planning Board of the Town of Niskiuna, New York, Kevin Walsh, Chairman, Planning Board, and Zoning Commission.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of quick comments before we get started. In a moment, I'll have the applicant come up and give a quick overview of the project and then we'll open the floor for public comments and we'll listen to what you have to say. The project is also on the agenda tonight under discussion items, so at that point in time, we'll try to, you know, address at least the theme of what we heard tonight under discussion. There's no action to be taken tonight, so there's no approvals to be given. Basically, it's a public hearing and this is a work in progress and you want to listen to what you have to say. Also, this submittal is for an average density development. Average density development requires a special, it's a special permitted use in the R1 zoning district, requires the Town Board to issue a special use permit in order for this to go forward. So at some point in time, when we're ready to send this forward to the Town Board, the Town Board will also have a public hearing. You'll also have another opportunity to be heard at that point in time. If the Town Board approves a special use permit, they will send it back to the zoning board, just planning board, and at that point in time, we'll do the final engineering and come through any issues, stormwater, drainage, et cetera, et cetera, to complete the major subdivision process. Okay? So you'll have plenty of opportunities to be heard besides tonight. Also, at any of our meetings, at privilege of the floor, you have an opportunity to be heard and you're always welcome to come and talk about any planning and zoning matters. Okay? And I think that's it. So with that said, I'll ask the applicant to state his name and address for the record and kind of give us an overview of the project.
Hi, Joel Basalian.
Joel.
Did you hear it?
It's not plugged in. Oh, boy. Yeah, there you go. So.
It's better to be plugged in.
So, yeah, we don't know if it works or not yet because it's not plugged in. Sorry, Laura, I didn't see that.
That's good. Joel Basalian, Basalian Properties, 2307 Berkeley Avenue, Niskiuna. As Lyndon and Kevin mentioned, it's a 24-lot average-density subdivision that requires a special use permit from the Town Board, but just to back up, this is a 16.4-acre site and per the R1 zoning code, we wouldn't have to go to the Town Board and we could have 28 building lots. But what we chose is we want to have a more conservative development, so the development that we proposed and with the, when you consolidate the houses into less area, you know, the average-density code states that you have to have a certain percentage of attached houses or twin-town homes or multiple-town homes. So what we have here is seven, seven twin-town homes and 10 single-family homes. And what you can see, sorry I didn't bring the big map, but I handed out quite a few maps and you've probably seen it on the website, but with the average density, what you have is you have this arc and then all around the arc, you have this forested buffer zone that'll remain either with the HOA or deed it to the town. You know, that's a detail to be discussed, but it'll either be an HOA or a town, or a town land, so you have this buffer to buffer from the neighbors, okay? And you have this conservative arrangement. With the arrangement, there's also quite a few benefits, too, is that with, we have a 10-foot-wide multi-use bike or walking path that connects the town hall and this kind of makes Niskiuna a nice walkable neighborhood. All right? We go down from the town green, we come down through, you can see the bike path continues on the left side of our loop, all right? And then it crosses orthogonal or straight across River Road and what we're planning to install is flashing lights that are motion-activated from motion on the pass. So right now, you can kind of see it in phantom on the plans, though, is that the bike path crosses diagonally across and I was just driving down River Road this morning and some poor soul was trying to cross the bike path, you know? And it's very difficult with that diagonal crossing and where it's located to cross. So we're going to reroute the bike path to our side of the road and cross it straight across with flashing lights, all right? And kind of along with that, too, is that we have shown or as proposed, and this is up for the public debate or comments, is a roadway connection to Windsor, all right? And if you look at some of the details in the plan, on the north side or right side of the loop, we have a median so that traffic coming onto River Road cannot take a left-hand turn into oncoming traffic because of the radius of oncoming traffic. So they can only take a right-hand turn out of the loop or a right-hand turn into the loop. So that kind of precludes people from turning into the oncoming traffic. Uh, let's see, what else? Oh, another big one. Right now, the sewer system, a main trunk line comes down Windsor and then it cuts across to the right and underneath the wetlands that are shown, like between the houses on the right and the right side of the loop. So this is a main sewer line that comes down from essentially this area, this whole area here, and the sewer line then continues along River Road and across into Blatnick. All right? So where this line goes underneath the wetlands, it's actually a clay tile pipe which has its root bounds. That means that it's full of roots because back then, there was no rubber seals on these lines, so there's a tremendous amount of water, of groundwater ingress and infiltration. And this is the problem that we ran into back in 2014 or 13 with the DEC where they slapped an injunction on our town to, the town had to address this groundwater infiltration on our sewer system. So essentially, we're going to put a new 15-inch trunk line, nice plastic, you know, sealed, and essentially, and run it down, straight down into the park. So we eliminate two 90-degree elbows, which when you have a 15-inch line flowing with sewage is quite a big deal. And now you have the PVC pipe. So essentially, the amount of sewage generated by this site will be offset by the amount of ingress and infiltration that we ended on the line. So essentially, we put in this new sewer line, which is a benefit to the whole town. And that's about it. Is there anything else, Kevin, that I should touch on?
I think that's good enough and we'll listen to what the public has to say.
Okay.
And we'll talk some more again later at discussion items.
You had a map floating around.
Yep, he brought some extra maps floating around. Okay, so we'll open the public hearing for 2538 River Road. Oh, I'm sorry, Laura. Laura's going to read some emails and letters that she received.
Yeah, there were four letters that we received quite a bit in advance and they were posted online, so I'm not going to read them entirely because hopefully, everybody's had a chance to see them, but we received comments from Andrew Millsbow in favor. He said he was supportive of the development. The board should ensure that the proposed development include connection of Windsor Drive and the multi-use paths to River Road. Both the Town Conference of Plan and Park's Master Plan rightly identify the connectivity issues between a majority of town residents and the recreational resources along Mohawk River. He felt that it would be important for the Planning Board to evaluate traffic calming measures and reduce, potentially reduce the speed limit on River Road. He felt it was reasonable to consider a 35 mile-per-hour speed limit on River Road to be consistent with adjacent roadways of similar use. He was drawing comparisons to Lyons Park. Received comments from Carl Dietrich, concerned he felt that the connection could be a major cut-through for the entire town to get to the park and River Road. It should be a four-way intersection if it's put in or potentially roundabout. And he felt it is very hard to cross River Road during rush hour, especially when Knowles lets out and that the flashing bike path crossings sometimes confuse people. So if we could find a safer way or think about that, that would be important. We received comments from Joan Serian. She's a senior looking to downsize to a smaller home. So she was interested in development and she wanted to see the compact view of housing with a mix of townhomes supportive of that. She thought it might be good to switch locations of the townhomes and single-family homes with the townhomes being closer to the road because the single-family homes require upkeep and often have children playing outdoors. And Arthur Pasquale.
Escrow.
Pascarello. Thank you. He wanted to comment that he had no objection to the residential development proposed by Mr. Bazoin. However, he strongly opposes the extension on Windsor Drive to connect River Road. He felt it would lead to significant increases in traffic on Windsor, create a rush hour on Windsor, increase the use of Windsor by tractor-trailers, increase noise pollution for the residents, create a safety risk, lessen the value of the homes. And he felt it was important to note that the Bazoin Properties can complete its project without the roadway extension. And then I did receive four comments between, over the weekend, which I was not able to include in the written record, so I just, I'm going to read them quickly. I want to, it matters when you submit your comments and you can't make it to the meeting, so we're not downplaying them at all. We are writing this email, this is from Tina Dell. We are writing this email to address our concerns about the possible extension of Windsor Drive. It has been shared with me that the residential development being proposed in our neighborhood can occur without this extension. We have lived on this street for well over a decade and have witnessed the result of further development on this road, none of which has been positive. As it remains, the street has way too much traffic and is populated by speeding automobiles, making it very unsafe. There is already a backup daily at the four-way stop sign from the high school that makes entering and exiting school very dangerous, especially for young drivers. If this extension is unnecessary for the builder, it would be detrimental to our community for it to occur. Thank you for your consideration. There, 4053 Windsor Drive. Then we received an email from Elaine Solgany, 4092 Windsor Drive. I am a homeowner at 4092 Windsor Drive. I received a letter from Art Pescarellio and I am against the Niskiuna Town Plan to open the Windsor Drive Road to access the new development and proposed bike path. I agree with all the points in Art's letter. I will be on a business trip and unable to attend the hearing, but I would like you to know about my position and count me on the not in favor for this extension. You are authorized to use my name. This is from John Mastracchio. I live at 212 Brittany Place near the lower end of Windsor Drive and close to the proposed Kelts Farm development. I reviewed the draft schematic of the new development that is proposed and generally like the plan that is proposed. I especially like the proposed forested buffer between the new houses and the existing Windsor neighborhood, as well as the extension of the walking path that is proposed. However, I have a concern that if Windsor Drive is connected to River Road through the planned development, that it would increase traffic in the neighborhood as it would serve as a shortcut between River Road, Balltown Road, and Knott Street. With no stop signs on Windsor Drive, cars already travel fast on Windsor and I believe that a connection to River Road through the planned development would increase traffic through the neighborhood and thereby increase risk to the safety of children that live in the neighborhood. I suggest the town consider approving extending the walking path on Windsor through the planned new development to more easily access Blatnick Park and River Road walking path, but not the road due to the traffic concerns. Thank you. And our last one, thanks for everyone's patience, Peter Onkush. I will not be able to attend the hearing on March 9th, but would like to express my feelings about the project. Unlike many that will be there opposing this project development, I want to go on record as being in favor of approving it. To me, it appears to be a good addition to housing in the area. It will provide townhouses for those wanting that type of home and also provide for some single-family homes, both of which are a plus for the town. In addition, they will increase the assessed valuation of the town taxes. I know there will be a lot of opposition to the Windsor Drive connection because other homeowners feel it will greatly increase traffic throughout the area. I do not share that opinion. I feel the connector is an important part of the proposal and should be part of the plan. Please do not let it be omitted. Traffic is already coming down Windsor Road over to Chestnut and out on Riverdale. Some also comes down Fox Hollow and out via Mont to River Road. If speed is a true concern, a speed table, not a speed bump, sorry, not a speed bump, should be considered for Windsor near where it dead ends now. We should have more outlets from Rosendale Estates to River Road.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Robinson. Appreciate that. Okay, so now we'll open the public hearing for 2538 River Road. Please state your name and address for the record and we'd love to hear what you have to say.
Good evening, friends and neighbors. My name is Tom Hodgkins. I live on Rosendale Road. I am opposed to this project. First comment about transparency, I think that all public hearings should be separately listed and posted on the website and in that public hearing notice, they should have all the relevant documents attached, posted along with the public hearing notice. And in that same notice on the town's website, there should be a forum for residents to submit their comments and so they can also read other residents as well. So you should have a public forum along the website, make it transparent so people don't have to come here or submit comments or listen to them, right? Just make it more transparent. I think that'll make for better outcomes in the long run. And part of that is, you know, a very good description of, I saw you had, later on in the meeting notes, there was a notice of the description, but kind of connect that with it and put everything else in because other communities also looking at this, their information, put everything in one spot and then let people discuss, comment upon it online. A lot of municipalities are doing this. This is where things are going in the 21st century. Another point on sort of good governance, that's my thing, is conflicts of interest. Being observant of government and development at the state level and even in Niskiuna, you see a lot of these developers, they make donations to the state party, the local party, local politicians, they just saturate their cash everywhere and they get good outcomes. I don't know what's going on. And so I think, you know, any sort of, you know, the town could probably have a policy where, you know, you have business before the board, you just disclose all of your donations, just so everything's known to everybody. So first of all, I really love this property. There was, you know, I think it was like one of those, it's in that area where, wow, I used to like roam as a young kid, like that wasn't developed at all back there. So this is kind of like in that whole area. And so that's, I think, we're losing those spaces and this will continue to diminish those spaces. I mean, kids need, adults need places to roam like that, that aren't just paved parks and with paths that are paved and everything like this. You need these places and they're diminishing in the town. And you look at how much you use Lysakil Nature Preserve now. Now they just put up a sign, you have to stay on the path in Lysakil because it's so many people use it. So you need to protect these spaces. And I think if you look at the Town Master Plan, you say, well, you should take the opportunities to preserve open space. Here we have, what is it, 20, how many acres is it?
16.4.
16.4, that's a pretty good size. You can, it has wilderness on it. It used to be open space. It used to be, you know, a flower farm. Before that, they had vegetables, but it was very nice. You can take this opportunity to say, okay, we're going to preserve this. We're going to, we're going to preserve this as open space. And if you're not going to do that, you market it agricultural as it once was and keep it agricultural and then maybe another farm can go in. So basically, I think this is, this sort of development is extinction development. It's unnecessary impact on open space and nature that currently exists. You have oversized houses, not using net-zero development, they're not using sustainable building materials as far as I know, none of that's, and it might be, none of that's in the, I haven't really been following all of the conversations here. But this, we don't need this. We don't need this. If you want to increase housing density in Niskiuna, you can rezone single-family districts to include multifamily homes or to allow for the development of micro homes. Plenty of these lots in Niskiuna have plenty of room for a micro home. You can have a small little apartment off-site, you can do that if you want to increase housing density. But even if you, so my last point is, I think, I think this, the argument that you're going to, this is beneficial for your taxes is a faulty one because you're going to have increased use of services, increased use of, in the parks and other infrastructure. And I don't think you're really going to have a net benefit, the financial incentives from that. So in closing, this is extinction development. We need to move away from this sort of development and reuse existing housing stock and turn it into multifamily homes or other things, but this is unnecessary and would be a detriment on the values of homes surrounding as well because you lose the open space. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Michael Casella, Rosendale Road. Been a resident of this town 59 years, been in business in town 38 years. And before I get into what I was going to say, this gentleman, I think, is completely off-base because it's private property. It's not a wilderness for people to walk around in. It's private property. Doesn't matter who owns it, it's not public property. I've looked at the projects. I know Mr. Bazoin. I've had the privilege to work with him on many projects, side by side with him. He does Class A work. He doesn't cut corners. He's very upfront. He's very transparent. He's very responsive to people's concerns, whether it's the town or the residents. Every project I've seen him work on has been an A+. This will be nothing less than A+. As far as the traffic calming, I'm big on that. I've been in front of the Town Board numerous times because I live on Rosendale Road and traffic calming is an issue throughout the town, throughout the state, throughout the country. As far as putting a roadway from this proposal onto River Road, I don't know why we can't find a middle ground like we did on Gaylor Place. There was a big controversy when Douglas Court and Lori Drive, they, nobody wanted that and they did put a road in, but it's not accessible through traffic. You can walk through it. It can be opened up in the event of emergency and maybe we could find a middle ground where everybody would agree that that would work. So basically, that's all I have to say. I wish him luck. I think it's a great idea. I think it's going to improve the whole town in general. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greensaven, 2455 Brookshire Drive. The Kelts property has been a very desirable piece of land for a couple of hundred years. As a farm, it was obviously very necessary at the time of the growth of Niskiuna. And when, and I'm only bringing this up today because the young man who spoke, and I can certainly understand his position about green space, because at one time, you couldn't build anything, any development, without donating to the town. And I think Niskiuna's done a wonderful job in land preservation. I'm not quite sure, I couldn't quite understand the speaker, but are we having smaller lots to get more green space on this property? We are. Okay. Well, the first time they did that, and I thought it was quite advanced, was when Avon Crest wanted to extend to the back part of the proposed development. And I think Marty Moore was probably here as supervisor at the time and she did a very good job of saying, look, we can consolidate, we can have more of what we want, but in smaller maintenance. I happen to have a half-acre lot, which in the days of many acres is relatively small and yet now, at my stage of life, is getting a little bit too big. But I do commend Mr. Bazion. I don't know him personally. I'm not quite sure about the way it's been designed. I did take a ride over Windsor Drive and I suggest that people who would like to know a little bit about this connection, to go to the ends of Windsor, there's a terrible drop, you know, from Windsor to where we're going to connect, hopefully, to the extension of Windsor and it's kind of messy back there. And I'm sure that will all be taken care of. Now, they mentioned seven townhouses. Are those seven individ, it doesn't look like they're individual, but are they individual townhouses or are they two on a lot?
Seven twins.
What, they're twins?
Seven twins.
Yeah, well, how can we have, well, okay, so we have seven twins. So we have 14 of them. Okay. And from what I'm looking at, then the houses will be in back of the townhouses? I don't read these very well.
And just so you know, I mean, this is a work in progress. We're going to hear what you have to say.
You haven't.
We still got a lot of engineering and reviews to do, you know, so.
I do agree that River Road with Mr. Casella, he's been here a long time and he has been very instrumental in trying to get traffic to slow down where he lives on Rosendale. But having it across from the park is going to be difficult and I'm not sure flashing lights are going to be honored. I don't know whether the state would approve a traffic light that, like the one on St. David's Lane, you know, is staggered and probably wouldn't hold up too much of the traffic going by. But the fact that we do have school buses and children, I'm not quite sure. I like that idea of just having some flashing lights saying, slow down. But I do want to tell you that, I don't know whether Kelts was related to the Ladatos, but they were the farm that became the Niskiuna Town Park. So the Planning Board, probably nobody here, or maybe the chairman was here at the time, that was dedicated, the town got a $500,000 grant from New York State, the Parks Preservation. And the Ladatos, I think there may be still Ladatos that live in the main house there, but the park has been, was our big park. And having this park, I say park, or it's a farm, but we still, it looks like there's a lot of green space there. And I think it's appropriate, it's a two-lane river road. I'm very anxious for it. I am not anxious for any more apartments. I don't think we get the resident who loves the town, who wants to be part of the town. So I think in this area, we are getting additional taxpayers. People will come, hopefully, send children to our school. But I want to tell everyone, we are a 14-square-mile town. We're a little town. I don't want micro houses popping up all over the place. So I think this is, right now, is a start. It's a very good plan. I'm anxious to see it develop and I know, I have a feeling it's going to be one of our pride and joy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Chairman Walsh and members of the Planning Board and Zoning Commission. My name is Victoria Varga. I live at 4041 Windsor Drive and I am vehemently opposed to a road connection between my street and River Road. I have two young children. My husband and I moved to our street because it is a beautiful neighborhood. It is safe. We watch our children cautiously because cars fly down our street as it is. There are heavy traffic times, especially when people are going to the high school in the morning and work, same thing at the end of the day. I think that connecting the road is not only going to lower our home values, we are a distinguished community on Windsor Drive. Homes turn over pretty quickly. People want to live there. It's beautiful and they pay disproportionately high property and school taxes to live there. And turning us into a major through fare is not fair. And turning us into a major thoroughfare is not fair. We have a nice walkway and bike path that many community members use. I like going outside. I like seeing my neighbors walk down the block. If they want to use the recreational facilities at Blatnik Park, they can do so if it's connected with a bike path or a walkway. But there's no reason to bring more cars onto our street. My daughter has to cross Windsor Drive to get onto her school bus in the morning. On two occasions at least, the cars have sped past with the stop sign out. All the school bus driver can do is honk the horn. That's not gonna save my child's life. I have seen cars so unable to control their speed on our street that they've had to pass other vehicles who are going the speed limit. So I'm fine with speed control measures. Those could be instituted now. But there's no way that we should make any more traffic come by our homes. There's no need to. We have other connections to River Road. We have a traffic circle that you can access off of Van Antwerp that's designed for that purpose. So I'm strongly opposed to any proposal that has a road connection between Windsor Drive and River Road. My second issue is, you know, and some of this is, I'm new to this. I came out today because frankly, I'm angry about this proposal. But I also wonder what communication this planning board has with our school district. Right now, there's a Board of Education meeting because our schools are crowded. They're talking about restructuring all of our schools, moving our children from one school to another. They haven't decided what they're gonna do. We've torn down a bunch of trees here right on Knott Street for a three-story apartment building. And now, we're developing 24 more properties at the end of our block. This is 50 residences with children coming into our school district. And how prepared are we for that? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is, what, my name is Ron Ricard. I live at 1454 Valencia Road in Niskuna. I'm a builder. I've done a lot of work, big additions in Niskuna, Colony, all over the area. I know I haven't before, been before this planning board before, but town board meetings, variances and stuff like that, I have been. But I just felt as if I wanted to make a little comment here. Number one, I don't have any objection right now to Mr. Buzoyne for his efforts to build this housing development on this vacant land. I call it vacant land. There's no trees on the property right now. There hasn't been. I put down hardly any trees. He bought the land. Did you buy the land? You own the land?
Yeah.
Okay. So the other, nobody else owns it?
No.
Okay, so you bought the land?
Yeah.
There was no house on this land. Oh, the house is gone.
Please, please address the board, sir. Okay?
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. So the house is gone, okay? The barn is gone. That's been an eyesore for a number of years. I thought there was gonna be a fire there or something at some point. So he's not paying me for this, but I just, my own feelings, he's, he's put a lot of money into this so far from what I can see. Someone who has, he paid for design, development of this thing. He went to the town a number of times. He reapplied for the current plan, from what I understand. The town in this case, through Laura Robinson, and she's the town planner, okay. She went over things with him. She come up with, I think, kind of a plan that would allow him to do what he wants to do with this, keeping some more trees and areas around here to not just put single-family houses on there. So I think both of these people have done their job, as far as I'm concerned, as far as laws and stuff like that. To receive current plans and stuff. So the way I see it, both have done their job. I just said that. Mr. Buzoyne, Buzoyne hasn't, he had, as far as I know, he could say, he told me, and I think he's told a lot of people, that he's really against bringing that road down from Windsor Court, Windsor Drive. So I believe that was his statement. Can I ask him if that's true or?
No, no you can't.
But I think it's well-known that he's against that. I've heard from different folks that the town is for it. Now, I don't know if that's true or not, or if somebody's builders or whatever's doing, again, it allows a conduit from the end of Knott Street down by the casino, straight up, right through Windsor and down to River Road, straight, kind of direct way there. I don't think that's right. I don't think it should be. So I'm against bringing that road down. I'm okay for him to do what he's doing. I think he's doing a good job. The other thing I'm concerned about is the safety of traffic and everything. Putting a flashing light and another flashing light on River Road doesn't make sense to me. You've got one down by Ferry Street on, by past Ferry Street, where a bridge goes over there. So you've got a flashing light there with a nice bike path that goes down. I don't know who paid for that. Was it a county project or, I'm not sure?
Federal.
Was it?
It was federal.
It was federal funds. Okay, so that was federal funds. Okay. Well, Mr. Buzoyne Joel said that he's going to do this, but I'm sure he's gotta get permission from the town, from the county. Of course, that's a county road right there. So to crawl across that, he's gonna have to get, that's up to him to do that. So, you know, so I don't want to see any Windsor Road. I don't really want to see any flashing light there. I've gone by that road many a times when the Knowles gets out or GE. It's a nightmare. But then we're having that roundabout at the end now because boy, that traffic used to back all the way up past Mario's and all the way up getting out at 4 o'clock in the afternoon or in the morning. And just about the safety again, and stuff like that, it seems to, it seems that, oh, it seems, okay, somebody mentioned the acreage of Niskuna, the town itself. It seems we're surrounded all by county roads and state roads. So are we, it seems like there's a couple issues here, like the thing that's gonna be going on supposedly over by the co-op. That particular road, Knott Street, is owned by the county. So the county came up with this big plan and everything to do something. They haven't done anything yet. But they're not worried about how the traffic backs up on the other side where Niskuna starts, up by the town hall, but, you know, that way. So I just would like to have the town board, and you guys are probably gonna do that when you're looking to these developments and everything, you should oversee the whole thing, a whole, oversee the whole thing. I do that when I'm doing a project. I look at all angles, how I'm affecting the neighbors. I mean, we got problems all over, Van Antwerp Road down here, it stopped by the CBS. Somebody takes a left off that road, it stops all the traffic going the other way. Joel, I believe, or Mr. Wilson, said he was going to install that bike path, a six-foot bike path. I'm not sure if that's true. He's not the town, not the federal government, he's gonna use his own money to do that? I can't address him, so I'm just, that's what he said. Okay.
All the details of the plan will be worked out once we get through at least the front end of the process.
Well, I applaud him for doing that. That's, that's a big thing. Clay, pricing, so who's gonna pay? I guess Mr. Buzoyne is going to pay for that new sewer to go in through too, correct? So that's a lot of money. He's doing a lot of stuff. I think that's about it, but I just, you know, I'm a kind of a developer, not so much of a developer, but I applaud what he's doing. I think he's, I know he's a good builder. He's gonna do what's right. And my only concern about is this Windsor Road connecting to his property and the traffic issues that it's gonna create on River Road. That's about it.
Thank you, sir.
Hi. My name is Javid Seifi. I live at 4033 Windsor Drive. And I lived there since 1995. And shortly after my home was built, about a year or two later, they decided to put this bike path in. And if anyone thinks the street looks nice, now you should have seen it without the bike path because it was really much more beautiful. So I raised my objections at the time, and I found a lot of, a lot of information about that street, which I never knew about, and I found out from the planning board at the time. So for any of the residents who are living there now, this, this connection to River Road has been on the initial plan for that whole subdivision since the late 1980s, when the initial plan was brought up. I never saw it. I only saw my subdivision, and I only found out about it when I objected to the bike path. When I came to the planning board at that time in the late 1990s, I was told that Windsor Drive was envisioned as a thoroughfare road to connect to River Road to allow vehicular traffic of all sites as another connection to Balltown Road to decrease the traffic on Balltown Road. They, actually at the time, even, aside from putting the bike path in, which I guess was in the town plan, they actually, actually made the road look like a major highway by lining the street with the two yellow lines in the middle and the white lines in the end, which if you look around Niskuna, only Van Antwerp or Balltown Road has those lines. Rosehill Boulevard is just as wide, has no lines. Now the road's been resurfaced, so for any new residents that moved in, you don't see that anymore, but that was done. At the time also, we asked about the speed because each subdivision was bringing in more traffic, more speed. Speed bumps were proposed, stop signs were proposed. All of them were negated. And instead, we got the white lines, the yellow lines to show that it was a major thoroughfare. If you walk down Rosehill Boulevard, the street's just as wide, there's stop signs for fear for it as you come through. Fox Hill Drive, which is much narrower, has stop signs all the way through it. Yet, no one wants to put, no one wants to put a stop sign on Windsor Drive. There have been accidents, there's been speeding. I think one year in the night, in the early 2000s, they actually did a speed study, which I didn't get a chance to bring, but the speed limit is actually five miles. People are traveling at least five miles faster on that road than they are on most other roads. So I think that, you know, I really oppose this going to Windsor, to River Road. I think you're gonna increase your vehicular traffic. I think as Mr. Pascarello mentioned, you're gonna get a lot more high-speed traffic, you're gonna get a lot more trailers, you're gonna get a lot more people cutting through, which is really going to destroy the safety in the area. And bike path per se is not gonna make the road any safer. It's not gonna stop a ball from running across or a child running across from that to catch a ball. It is really gonna make it unsafe. So, you know, I would highly recommend the board not to allow to go to River Road. And, you know, to answer this one gentleman's question also about the trees, you know, there's no trees on that property because it's all wetlands. If you wa, if you look at the end of the street, there's castiles growing all through there. And if you could look at the area in the fall, you have those same purple flowered plants growing all across that entire field. So it's all wetlands. And my understanding at least was that if you destroy wetlands, you have to do something. So if he's gonna build this subdivision all through there, all those wetlands are gonna be destroyed. So I don't know, maybe, maybe they're not building as dense housing because of the wetlands issues, but I would really bring that up. And, you know, finally, I would really ask the town, really, that I know if that subdivision, if the subdivision needs to be built, it doesn't need to go to River Road. You don't need to have a road connected to it. And really, whether that goes through or not, you need to do something about the traffic speed on that, on River Road, actually on Windsor Drive. All your outlets, even from Rosehill Boulevard, Rosehill Boulevard connects to Van Antwerp, but if you go down, the road narrows, it winds, it's actually faster to go down St. Anne's and go up Windsor. So you really have created a thoroughfare street through that whole area and nothing to do about the safety of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Berkeley Davis. I live at 4020 Windsor Drive. Been there since 1996. My remarks are concerned with the connector from Windsor, and I'm opposed to that. There are three reasons. First, there's no, it doesn't seem to be an obvious advantage to the town in dealing with the traffic to and from GRC at Campbell for that connector. The second point is that from, we locals seem to have found adequate traffic patterns so we can easily get where we're going. We can get on River Road going east with no issues, no benefit there. Third, the town already has a problem with speeding on Windsor as well as other places, and this would only aggravate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Connie Trigger, and I live at 4072 Windsor Drive. What I say isn't going to be different from what other people have said, but I just want to put it out there. I've been a Niskuna resident since 1989, and the last three years have been on Windsor Drive, but the first 28 were on the upper end of Grand Boulevard. And this is a county road that is used as a pathway from Balltown and Van Antwerp down through to Knott Street, taken by drivers to avoid other routes with traffic lights, turns, et cetera. And in 1998, 1999, without any planning or traffic studies, I learned later, some physical changes were made to that area of Grand Boulevard. And I'm not gonna go into all the specifics of what they did, but I bring this up because it's an example of the issues that can arise when careful thought and analysis is not made, is not put into changes made in an area with a high volume of traffic. Work had to be redone, expenses increased, and the neighborhood's safety was compromised. So I would like to learn more about what consideration has been given and analysis has been done to avoid a similar situation indirectly involving another county road with a high volume of traffic, River Road. Information about traffic studies for the River Road, Rosendale Road roundabout showed that existing traffic volume, predicted volumes until 2039, and the recording of vehicle speeds were examined with over 12,000 vehicles using that intersection a day. That intersection is only a two-minute drive from the proposed development. Also mentioned in the presentation was the path of least resistance, and I think that could be used to describe the option of turning into the new development, then onto Windsor Drive, then heading west to Knott Street East and Balltown Road, or winding through the streets that branch off from Windsor, like Brittany Drive or Fox Hollow to cut through to Rosendale or Route 7, or from the other direction, heading up Knott from Balltown as a shortcut to River Road. And if those routes don't occur to drivers themselves, their GPSs or the Waze app might start sending them there. There are streets being used now, as you mentioned, that people use as cut-throughs, but in most cases, those have stop signs or they have sharp angled turns that require drivers to reduce their speed. But once on Windsor, drivers would find themselves on a basically straight, very wide street with no curbs, and after snowstorms, especially in the morning, roads that have not been plowed. And in the other direction, if cars are to travel from Windsor into the new development, there is the potential for backups at the stop signs at either end of its road, delaying those residents and creating opportunities for accidents as cars pull out onto River Road. So again, the concerns I'm bringing up are not news to you, but I would like to learn more about what research and study is being done as you, regarding traffic as you consider this proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Daryl Bright, 1420 Van Antwerp Road. In the, in the interest of transparency, I am a member of the Niskuna Climate Smart Community Task Force, which is overseen by, or chaired by Mr. Laflamme and overseen by Laura Robinson, but not discuss what I'm going to say today with them. So I don't necessarily think anything about this project is bad, and I'm not gonna say any of these things because I don't think that you guys have considered them, and I'm sure that you have. But in case there is something that maybe has been, you know, a lot of the good points that have been brought up have been very good, and I think they're very important things to think about. I don't necessarily think that the road connection is bad. However, there is already speeding on Windsor Drive. I walk and run there quite frequently. I ran there just today. Cars go very fast. I don't know that they're gonna go faster if this connection is created, but there probably are gonna be more cars if it is. So if that's gonna go forward, I really think you gotta think of it, some of the things that I already brought up about, should there- things that I already brought up about, should there be stop signs? Should we do some things to maybe discourage just cut-through traffic? I was out walking, I'm really thinking about this over the weekend and it's not a very wide road. And, you know, I've seen cars go extremely fast. There is the bike lane or pedestrian pathway there, which is very nice to have. I wish that more roads had that, to be honest with you. But the bottom line is that the cars are going very quickly and I live on Van Antwerp Road, so believe me, I know what I'm talking about if, because I feel like Van Antwerp Road is just to cut through to avoid Balltown. But it's both directions. So if you're in that new development and you have children and you have to bring them to the high school for music lessons in the morning or, or extra band, as, as many of us do, how are they going to get there? If there's no connection, they're going to be forced back out onto River Road and around, which in the morning, that road isn't very easy to manage. So you're putting more traffic there, which it could be an easier pathway to come the other direction. As far as coming out of the development, if you're, I'm not a big fan of, of a traffic light, really. I don't like the idea of, of another traffic light. A roundabout is not a bad idea, you don't have to stop, but then they're particularly precarious for pedestrians and we're talking about eventually having children cross over from there into the town park. As far as the roundabout, or as far as the signal for the bike path, there's a few different ways that those work. And someone that does quite a bit of biking, there's a few of them around that you'll see, is the one on River Road is existing, it just flashes all the time. Flashes all the time and I don't know that anybody really pays much attention to it. However, there are, there's one on Aqueduct Road that's by the new project that they're putting in for the Rivers Ledge. And, thank you. The, and that one is most insensitive. So when you get to the intersection, it comes on, I mean, if you're on the bike path. And cars do stop for you. They don't always stop, so you gotta be careful, but they do usually stop. And it's also, there's a, there's one where you have to push the button that's all the way down, like Rotterdam Junction, where you press the button and light comes on and then cars will stop because you're standing there. But I don't like the ones necessarily just always flashing. I don't know that that helps, but I do like the idea of having something rather than having, I mean, you know, just a traffic light where you're going to have to be stopping a lot of the time, that's, there's no reason for it. You know, anytime that we add homes in this unit, it will affect the home values because there's going to be more of them. So you're talking about supply and demand. I'm not sure there's anything you can do about that. There's more homes, there's more options for people. It is going to affect, because people, I mean, people do want to move into Niskuna though. I, I graduated from Niskuna and I came back as soon as I had the opportunity. And I have many friends from high school who did the same. I think that, so, you know, if these are, and it sort of seemed like it, but I, I don't know from just my brief looking at it, that these are a little bit more inexpensive, you know, could be something for seniors, could be something where you have opportunities to, to downsize or, you know, go into a less maintenance place. My house is on an acre of land that is a lot of work and I thought it was fun before I had children and now I'm like, I don't know what I was thinking because I don't have time. But, you know, I'd like the idea of the trees in the buffer and I think that we've had a lot of concerns, some of us, about all the trees that come down. I have to go by that, that new development there with the corpses of the trees that are there across from ShopRide and it makes me very sad. But, you know, and I don't know that you guys necessarily have anything to do with that, but it's, it's something I feel like that we need to address. I don't like to see the trees coming down and they're coming down all over. It's not, I mean, that's a major one. I think it's something to think about as far as emergency vehicles, is that connection going to make a difference? Will it cut down response time? Is there, you know, I'm sure that's something that you've looked at, but it's important. And I know that the schools don't always necessarily check with you guys, but what happens if we go to one middle school over where Iroquois is? And what's the traffic, what, what's that going to do to the traffic if they do that? Has there been a traffic study done? I don't know. I mean, maybe you don't know either, maybe the school district did it, but I know that they're trying to decide relatively soon whether or not they're going to do two separate schools or, but again, if that does happen, what is going to be the back result of that to a now cut-through that could be utilized somehow for that? I personally think that we need more stop signs. I would like to see more stop signs on Windsor and on many roads, to be honest. Even the cut-throughs that they do have stop signs, I feel like they're inadequate. But I will say, as someone that goes through the town on my feet most of the time and sometimes on a bike, most people seem to stop at the stop signs. And it does, at the very least, I mean, even when they roll through them, they're slowing down significantly. I don't know that they're doing it because I'm there, you know, but I think that that's something to think about. We do have a lot of traffic and we have a lot of speed. Every time they propose anything, you guys hear it. Every road, no matter where it is in the town, they, the speed is an issue. So, you know, I don't know what kind of control you have over stop signs and everything else, but I don't know that it's wise thing necessarily do without additional, not just within the project, but comprehensively throughout the area that will be affected. So, thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
My name is Constance Kewell. I live on the Hempstead Road, so I'll be brief. So there is currently 161 properties for sale in Niskuna and we're all pretty happy with the value of our houses, right? So the more you build, the price of, of our house will go down, so that's not a good thing. Elementary schools are completely full. It's 92, 97 something percent full. The plan that the board has right now, I came from Rosendale, is four years out. So the, the change is going to happen four years, which nobody mentioned. So there's not going to change every year, we have more and more students in schools. So basically not a capacity. And as everybody mentioned, Balltown Road, River Road are crazy drives. I mean, especially, you know, eight in the morning, seven in the morning, you can't even drive your kids to school. Like my son goes to Iroquois, I mean, you can go through River Road. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
My name is Rajib Data. I live in 4101 Windsor Drive. I'm strongly opposed to the extension of the road. I think Windsor Drive is a, is a nice neighborhood. In fact, connecting the road, I, I don't know what exactly it, it brings to the town. In fact, the property that is being built, if the heavy traffic is passing through that property, I don't think that the people who are buying those houses also going to like it. My daughter used to cross the street, as one of her neighbors said, after being dropped off from the school bus and many kids, kids in the neighborhood actually does that. The, the traffic speed, as almost, most of the people who opposed it said, it's, it's almost out of control. And so it's, it's really a safety concern apart from the fact that, you know, the house prices might go down and all that. I think it's a major safety concern for the neighborhood, for the kids. So I strongly oppose the extension of the road. I think the bike path is a good idea. It can be extended, connected to, many people actually walk along the bike path or bike along that. Connecting it to the Blacknik Park will be a good idea. There can be different ways of managing the traffic crossing the road, but again, I, I strongly oppose to extending the road. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
My name is Dan Palaschak. Thank you for letting me address you guys. We both lived on Windsor Drive, 4049, and we're currently on St. Anne's Drive, which is right off of Windsor. And everything that I've heard so far, I'm really seconding some against both the development as well as the cut-through. And it'll sound like I'm repeating everything that everyone else said, but I want you guys to understand that we're all kind of not happy with this. So I have three boys, we like to bike, run and we like to shove each other. So if we're going on that path, but the car's going not 35 or even 40 miles an hour, it's probably not very safe. People are going very fast down that road. Traffic passed through for existing residents would not benefit the new community, but it also will detrimentally affect River Road traffic. It sounded like they were going to turn to the right, which means everybody leaving GE is going to be slowed down and then everyone is going to go right past the middle school and elementary school out of that development to try to get to work in the morning and come back in the afternoon. They're going to turn into a 45 mile an hour road, which, you know, if you went down there, 45 is sort of a suggested speed limit and that may not be safe on its own. Several people mentioned taxes, both because we have more housing, but also why are we on this street? Why are we in that neighborhood? Do we want more people walking down the paths? Do we want more houses? And, you know, people would be told that maybe taxes will go down. So we already heard about school taxes, that's going to go up, right? 70 million project, they're going to propose and we're going to say, well, we need actually more because we're going to have 25 families on one side, 30 families on the other. So prices for the houses are not likely to benefit from this. I will tell you this, if I'm looking around and there's a cut-through and another big development, I may reconsider or may have reconsidered buying my home where I am currently. Several people mentioned overcrowding in the schools. If they cannot address it over the next four years, someone else should at least consider this. So what do we want? Do we want 50 more homes? Do we want 100 more homes? How many can this community sustain at present time? More people is not better. If we wanted this, we would be, it's connected to Albany, we're all here for a reason and this may not be beneficial to this as well. And, you know, as a father of three children, safety of the children is definitely going to be negatively affected both by overcrowding, to a certain extent, certainly just increasing the local community by 25 homes. I'm not sure if anybody counted how many homes are on Windsor right now. Is that double of what we have right now on that street? If it's connected, and even if it's not directly connected and people are just walking, they're not going to go on River Road. They're going to come back into our community for nice leisurely walks, hopefully, or maybe it'll be 8:00 PM and I don't know that person because they're not my neighbor from across the street or five houses down. They're from quarter mile away and I'd never go down there. And now I'm not sure if my kids should or should not play on my driveway. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Matthew Lean from 221 Brittany Place, which is just off of Windsor. Not opposed to the development. I would ask that there be some covenant somewhere that limits additional phase development on the buffer, including additional parking lots, so that there's no additional development in those buffers. I am concerned with the road extension. Would traffic calming impact other intersections in roads? I've heard that mentioned. Already have a high-speed cars on Windsor. At Brittany, there's no stop sign and my kids have to cross the street on Windsor to get to the bike lane. I, I get anxiety when they do it because there's a little bit of a curve and cars can't necessarily see them crossing Brittany, so I kind of have to play traffic cop, particularly during rush hour, which is around the time they get home from school and start to go out. I'm curious if the developer will be impacted in the density if the Windsor Road is not extended. I would prefer a less dense development and with no connectivity through to Windsor, although I think alternatives would be interesting, including a nice-looking removable barrier that'll let some emergency traffic get through. Or something with curb cuts that allows emergency vehicle to get through, but no regular traffic. I'm excited about dual-lane bike path, but I do have also concerns about River Road. So we have a, a major intersection re-haul at the circle and I'm curious if we have any good simulation data and simulation data isn't always that great. So maybe we should find a way to even, you know, further delay doing this until we can get some actual road traffic data. I'm also concerned that, and I'm curious to see, I haven't seen it in the booklet if there's any and might not be at this stage, if the town does any modeling to see whether or not it would adjust Waze or Google Maps or how people handle traffic routing. So I'm curious what type of data is being used to make that decision and I'm also curious about the timeline of what that would take if you planned to do that and what type of input along the process. So in short, I'm, I'm against the extension of the road. I'd like half the density of the planned development within the same bounds, although I think there might be some wiggle room on the, on the Wilderness Buffer. I don't know if that's doable, but I'd like half that density and I, I think it would be appropriate to have an emergency access road to it, but not a full road for cars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mukesh Khare. I live in 4068 Windsor Drive and everything has been said so far, I can, I'm also strongly against extending Windsor, Windsor Drive for all the reasons that were stated, for safety, for very high traffic, et cetera. I also think that this will really reduce the home prices on Windsor Drive in particular. And I think it's a good idea to put a bike extension path and just continue the, the path that we already have that could connect us better to the Blacknik Park and other places. That's pretty much what I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Daniel Frommow. I live at 1010 Shannon Boulevard. First about the development, I'm opposed, but only slightly opposed to development itself. I know the town is already near its max and build-out and having all the development right across from the park, it could hurt the feel of the park and I don't really know how much residents, new residents, after moving in are going to appreciate hearing every weekend morning, games going on at the bullparks right across. But development, only minorly opposed. Some comments about the trees. People mentioned we have fewer trees left in the town. Furtit said there's no trees in the property, that's just the open part of the property. I've looked on Google Earth and seen maybe about 50%, the whole left side of the map pretty much is treed right now. And I appreciate the developer saying they'd leave a treed buffer zone, I like that. It's not clear to me on the map how much of that is trees. I know that if I lived in one of the neighboring streets, I think that's Chestnut Lane, Briar Ridge, I'd like to have the tree buffer zone because I would have paid for that woodland view and the privacy and might be nice to at least make sure there's like 100 feet of trees. I think the, isn't, let's say 100 feet of trees already, you could probably do that with, I think only removing maybe about two structures you could fit that in. Just say, existing homeowners wouldn't like having their views, like having a lower priority than future residents who don't even exist yet. And also about the trees, the town code, probably knows, section 2011, paragraph B. I don't know if this is done because I haven't seen everything, but it wasn't in the agenda. So developers are required to superimpose their drawing on top of an air, recent aerial view of the area to seal the trees, that way the town can decide which trees should be kept. And I just want to make sure that gets done. It reminds you a little bit of about a decade ago when the Stanford Mansion, Angersville Residence off Balltown Road, trees got removed and from what I read back then, it was people didn't do their job in the town of making sure that those trees were surveyed and the ones that should have kept, like, were kept. And the last thing I want to talk about is the cut-through, which I am against the cut-through. Yes, having the cut-through would take away some of the traffic in the neighboring roads like Riverdale Road, but the residents in Windsor Road, most of them have expected, they're used to that, the quieter nature that is now compared to have extra traffic. And I still like giving. And I still like giving precedence to the people currently that are here than to future people that don't exist yet. People have already mentioned cut through, you don't really need, you don't, deserted two access points, don't need it for construction or emergency vehicles. I like the builder's bike path. That's nice, and even if there weren't a bike path, just extending that little bit like the builder has right now, even if you had a little bit more trees, like, it's still not that far to get around, so existing neighbors and new neighbors can get around. And I do like the developer mention that he was considering putting the lights that flash only when people are at the intersection. Because I know from being a biker and runner around town that, yeah, if you have lights that continuously go, you could tend to not pay attention, but if they're only activated when people are there, that would be a big help. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Evening. My name is Carol Schumroff. We live on 4088 Windsor Drive. Sort of new to this thing, the town boards and the town halls and what have you. We've been here for 10 years in Niskuna at our current residence, probably about six or seven years, whenever they built the homes. You know, builders are in the business of making money. Right? I mean, we're all in the business of making money. So the property there is not to make Niskuna look beautiful and wonderful and amazing and preserve it. This development is to make money, which is fine. You bought the land, you're allowed to make money off of it. I can't, there's nothing that I don't think any of us can do about that. Having said that, I hope that none of us here are wasting our time by coming here, and I hope that you guys are actually listening and paying attention. It's an hour into this, and the longer it goes, the less people tend to listen. And I also hope that you have already made up your minds, because a lot of times, to Dr. Safi's point, these are the things that have already probably been sorted out. And the road was set up and the idea was probably set up a while back that we're going to connect through. Someone mentioned that the builder was against connecting through, and this is the town's idea. I hope that you guys will be able to let us know if that is the case or not. If you've already decided to run through from the casino all the way to the park, let us know, we won't waste our time. But it's a terrible idea. I mean, it's not a bad idea, it's a terrible idea. How many of you live on Windsor Drive? I'll take that as none. So I guarantee you, if two of you, one of you, five of you, whatever the majority is, lived on Windsor Drive and you had kids that were five years of age or 10 years of age or 18 years of age, you would not want this thing. You want to build the homes, build the homes. There's nothing I think that any of us can do about that. Do not connect through. Other than everyone's going to cut through, they're going to fly through, they're going to go down to the casino, they're going to get drunk, they're going to fly through back the other way. It's a terrible idea. I don't even know how, why that's up for proposal and why it's up for discussion. I don't see what any of us gain by this. People are already used to getting to where they need to get to. There are plenty of people that work at the hospital, that work at GE, that work wherever, that can get through without any issues. They've figured it out, they're not any later to work, they can get home safely. Again, I, I, I'm not going to say anything new that people have said, but I, but I hope that, like I said, as time goes by, thank you for the picture, you don't have to, as time goes by, people lose interest in this. And you guys are sitting here going, all right, let's get this over with and get it done. For the people that live on that road, how about you go from house to house and ask every single person that lives on that road? I can't think, and I would almost bet that maybe you'll find one person. I don't know that you can find two people on that street that think that it's a good idea for that road to connect through. Have it coming in from, from Windsor, have it, have it come in as a dead end, and we can call it a day, build as many things as you want, make them nice, hopefully. But what do you gain by coming through? Can, are we gaining anything?
We'll just listen to what you have to say, we'll have some discussion later on in the agenda.
Okay. That's all I'm going to say, there's other people wanting to talk. Please consider this. And like I said, a lot of times, oftentimes, many times, we've already made up our minds before we even get here, you guys know exactly what, and this has been talked to behind closed doors. And this is all just, a lot of it is just for show, to say we had it. We weren't even made aware that this meeting was going to take place. So how is it that the people that live on Windsor Drive had no idea this was taking place? Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jamie Puccioni. I'm a resident at 1275 Hawthorne Road. And I am new to this as well, and I saw the signs on Windsor Road. And I actually rushed over here just from teaching a class that meant fitness, so excuse my appearance.
Take a picture.
No, don't please, don't take a picture. But I really wanted to share some thoughts. I too am opposed to the extension of Windsor Road to River Road. I have experienced cases of road rage from people cutting through, driving very fast. I typically drive from, like, if I'm coming from the co-op or from Niskuna High School where I'm dropping my son off and driving nicely, following the 30 mile an hour speed limit, and then turning on St. Anne. I've had people give me bad hand gestures because they're rushing and cutting through from Balltown to Windsor to get to River Road, to go wherever they are needing to go. And I just can't even imagine being a resident there. And now that I'm teaching my sophomore to drive, as I drive him to school sometimes, we are coming up Rose Hill, we get to St. Anne, and in the morning, that is a very busy left-hand turn, like, as it is right now. And I'm telling my son, okay, when you're coming up to this left-hand turn, you need to be very careful because cars zoom around that corner very fast, and sometimes they're difficult to see. And I can only imagine what is going to happen for that left-hand turn if you make it a thorough fair. So that is what I wanted to share. And I also walk this neighborhood, maybe some of you have seen me with my handsome golden retriever. I walk him and people zoom down Rose Hill, they zoom down Rosendale, they, they cruise through stops, and it's very dangerous, especially in the winter months, when it gets dark at 3:45, 4 o'clock. You can't walk your dog, you can't walk in the neighborhood because people are speeding, and it is dangerous. That is all.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Minterd, I live at 4049 Windsor Drive. I bought the house about three and a half years ago. Grew up in Senectity, definitely know when traffic builds up and can change a neighborhood. I grew up on Parkwood Boulevard. Love Niskuna, it's, if you live in Senectity, you want to live in Niskuna. I can tell you in the last three and a half, four years, how much speed is on Windsor Drive. I have a six-year-old daughter, goes to Rosendale, and I've had my mailbox hit three times, smashed. That's within the last year. I can tell you that backing up into Windsor Drive in the morning, from 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning, if I don't really go slow, I could hit a pedestrian or I could hit another car, and it's worrisome. And safety is about everything to me. I run a trucking fleet, I have a six-year-old daughter, and I can tell you, when I bought this house three and a half, four years ago, I never thought that this would cut all the way through River Road. And also running and operating a trucking fleet, I can tell you that all the mapping and the GPS in the world is going to take it down Windsor Drive. It's going to go right to River Road. I don't care what kind of GPS information that you have, it's going to go down with least resistance. And that's very worrisome. And I can tell you that we're talking about residents that don't pay $2,000 in taxes. We're talking about hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayers behind me right now, concerned about this connection. I can tell you that the builder is probably going to build his homes. And how many homes he will have, over 24 homes, 20 homes, 18 homes, that's for you to really decide. But the Windsor connection, I can really tell you, I oppose it. It will change the dynamics of the neighborhood. And it's not side, I lived on Valencia before this, when it's all crowded streets. This is a development that everyone probably purchased a home to have a neighborhood feel, to walk down the street and not hopefully get hit by a car, to not have speeders going down. If you went on our street from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning or 4:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon, I can tell you, just go there and walk. It is people going 40 to 50 miles per hour very easily. And observe, it's right down the street. That's what's nice thing about Windsor Drive, it's right down the street. Probably several of the people here probably walked here tonight. We are right down the street from Town Hall. And please, value our opinions, and we look forward to hearing more from you. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Zain Syed from 4040 Windsor Drive. I'll be very short. I'm against the extension because of the traffic and, and it may decrease the cost of the house also. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Stempel. Thank you for this opportunity. I live at 4076 Windsor Drive. I'm strongly against the connector from the Windsor Drive to the River Road. I have a nine-year-old daughter who's all the time playing across the street, along the Brittany Road and across the street from our home to the neighbors, and it's a big, big safety issue. And I know all of the neighbors living here that have their kids around my daughter's age and they play. And with the traffic going and with the speed that is quite high, we're all concerned about the speed that has been talked about today many times. I do want to express my sort of disappointment that Town House has not been transparent in communicating this issue, and we got to hear from some people knocking at our doors. I wish there could be a way that email is sent across to the neighbors, the way we get the email about our taxes or mail, so that there is transparency and the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Before I close the public hearing, here we go.
My name is Rahul Chokhana, 4089 Windsor Drive. And for all the reasons they've mentioned, strongly opposed to extending Windsor Drive to River Road. And came back from a vacation, a long vacation, back into Asia, and just found out from a third party that this plan was even considered, and I was pretty shocked because for sure, when we moved here, when I joined GRC and moved here in 2013, if, if the Windsor Drive was connected to River Road, suddenly we would have come and stayed where we are staying now. And for the safety reason and traffic reason, strongly oppose extending Windsor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Joel Buzine, Berkeley Avenue. I just want to clear up some misconceptions.
Well, Joel, if you're going to, you know...
No, I'm speaking as a resident.
Okay, because we're going to have a discussion, if you're going to respond to it, we can do it.
I forgot a few things. I've lived here for 28 years, I've had three kids go through the Niskuna school system. This is my seventh subdivision in town. I previously did 42 lots, this is another 24. So somebody mentioned the parks, but I donate $3,000 per lot for, you know, 66 houses, that's $198,000 that I've given or will give to the town in Niskuna to improve the parks, and also another $198,000 to improve the water in the sewer without consideration of the 14-inch line that we're putting in. And one other thing, too, is that these houses are marketed, they're executive ranches in townhouses, okay, which are marketed towards empty nesters. I've had a lot of people, Laura Robertson's had a lot of people come up, in fact, I probably have 12 of the units sold already, to people without school kids, okay? People that want to downsize, they're selling the Niskuna McMansions to downsize to a townhouse, okay, or to a small executive ranch. So we are not going to put, you know, a burden on the school systems for this. It's not marketed towards people with kids, okay? It's marketed as a nice retirement community with a walkable bike path that people can go up to the town green, they can cross the street safely to Blacknik Park. And I've also, in public forums, raised the concerns, you know, about the speed on River Road, you know? The River Road traffic doesn't, is 40 miles an hour, it doesn't change to 45 until you pass the bike path, right? And I've spoken to the county about that, somebody brought it up, getting that reduced to 35 miles an hour like Rosendale Road. I mean, the people that work at Capel and, excuse me, and R&amp;D, you know, if they're speeding home, okay, they're worried about a few minutes, it's our neighborhood, okay? And there's going to be a roundabout at Rosendale and River, so they used to speed at 45 or 50 miles an hour, down to that point and then sit there for 10 minutes, okay? Now they're going to have a nice roundabout, they're going to get through faster. I really think that, you know, we should consider 35 miles an hour on River Road. And again, this is a empty nester subdivision, and there's a need for this type of housing in Niskuna for people that want to stay in Niskuna, all right? And when they have these large houses, their kids, like myself, you know, I got a large house, all my kids are gone, I'm paying a huge amount of taxes, all right? And I want my wife to go into one of these smaller houses, I want to stay in Niskuna, all right? And this will benefit the tax base in Niskuna.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for the public hearing for 2538 River Road?
Lorraine Saban, 2455 Brookshire Drive. Well, the, what I find, and I commiserate with people that live on a, a main road and a road that, which I find unbelievable, they did not know that the dead-end street was ever going to be connected. I've been here 42 to 45 years, I'm not quite sure, I'm getting a little older, but the fact is, when Windsor Drive was developed, it was always in the mind, maybe not on paper, but I think if we research it, they had tried numerous times to buy the Kelts Farm. This is not anything new. It's new to you people. I'm not sure how long you've lived there, you've talked three years, five years, and it is a lovely place. And when I drove down it on a Saturday, and I got to the end and I had to turn around, unfortunately, I don't know whose driveway I pulled into, but I did, I did make a turn. I didn't bother to go through and check all the other streets that may have led me out to the main road. The point that I'm saying is, I think our normal attitude about moving to Niskuna is, I'm here, close the door, put the fence around it, I don't want anybody else to come here. Well, that can happen, and then the town can dry up and blow away because that's what happens. When we don't move on, use our space, unfortunately, these people have lovely homes, I think you have sidewalks, there are, there are home developments that don't have sidewalk. I don't have a sidewalk in front of my house. And at the time, when I asked about it, moving here from a place that had sidewalks, they said, oh, the people don't want them. Well, I think Windsor Drive, we made a point to say you need to have sidewalks there so children can walk, so children can, people can wheel their babies and carriages and what have you. I understand Windsor Drive. They've had a very peaceful, dead-end street, and I don't know whether it starts at St., what was, what is the road before that you can turn and go into, check out Rosendale and some of the other streets? But it's a beautiful street, your homes are lovely, and I don't think that's going to change. I think frankly, I would petition the police, I would look for traffic and safety, I would do anything I could possibly do to hold down the traffic. I don't think you're going to hold down the progress. And you will, as we all do, we love to be here. Now, whether we're going to have lots of children or a few, statistics have said that we are not having the same big families. I had four children, people have one or two. They don't even, you know, and they're very wonderful parents. And every time we have a school bond issue, that affects all of us. It'll affect your taxes, my taxes, and I don't like the idea that we have these million-dollar bond issues every couple of years at the women's whisk of superintendents. bond issues every couple of years at the whim and whisk of superintendents. Those are the places we should go and start demanding the quality. But again, getting back from what I've heard from the ten or eleven people that have spoken, and it's, it's not a new theme. Nobody wants traffic on their street. Nobody wants to be included in the RIF rep. But we do have a town that requires safety traffic patterns. And as much as you have a wonderful, I wish you'd come to more town board meetings. You would certainly find that the town is doing its best to keep everyone happy. You're not happy, sell your house. Go away, go, go someplace else. But if you love Niskiuna the way most of us do, I think we have to make the accommodations for the safety, the benefit, and the love of this town. It, it, we're, we're all, we're eighteen oh six. Think about it. Think about the history that you're part of. But if it's traffic, I agree with you, I'll hold up a stop sign, we have it on Saint David's Lane, it tells you what the mileage is that you're going. These are precautions. I don't think, you know, as far as saying, close down the road, we don't want you to put, to have people going by our house. That's unrealistic. I'm sorry, I do get passionate about the town, and I expect to live here till I go out feet first, but who knows? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last call for the public hearing on twenty-five thirty-eight River Road. Anybody else wish to be heard before I close the public hearing? No? Okay, I'll close the public hearing for twenty-five thirty-eight River Road. Thank you for your comments. We'll be discussing more later on in the agenda. We have some other business to take care of first. Actually, and what's up next is privilege of the floor, so anyone wishing to be heard regarding any planning and zoning matters, including twenty-five thirty-eight River Road, you're welcome to come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and we'll listen to what you have to say.
Javed Sethi, four zero three three Windsor Drive. I think this one echoing theme is that this plan has been on the books for many years. No one knew about it. No builder ever told anybody that the plan for this street is to go to River Road. No one. Anybody had said that, most of us would have not bought the property there. It really wouldn't. It, and, and I would tell this gentleman who's building, that if you want to connect this to the, to, to, to River Road, you need to tell every resident that this is going to be a high, high-volume, high-traffic road. Because it is. There's no way you can hide it. And you should tell them that you're building it on wetlands, because that may have some impression on people's ability to whether they want to buy a house on wetlands. But I think there's one very strong echoing theme that no one knew. And unless somebody, either the builder gives you a map of more than that little subdivision that you can see what the long-term plan is, no one would ever know, and no builder has ever told anybody. This is the last piece of property that is for sale, and I know that this has been up, is, I lived there twenty-five years, they were waiting for this farmer, the guy who Kelso owned it, to die so somebody could buy the property, because he didn't want to sell it, and he was offered before I had heard. So please, if, if you're gonna do this, make sure that the builder is asked to inform any buyer that this is going to be a high-thoroughfare street, so that they know upfront. Thank you.
Thank you. Privilege of the floor, any, any zoning matters, planning and zoning matters at all? Sure, well, you can, you can state a comment, we're not gonna get into Q and A, so...
So again, it's Ron Ricard, I live at fourteen fifty-four Valencia Road. I've lived there for about thirty-two years, to be exact. So I just want to note, what really appalled me, last week I was at the Town Hall to get a permit, talked about his permit, and I looked across the street from the Shoprite, and all the trees were knocked down. All the trees were knocked down. So I went, when I went into Town Hall, I said, gee, I'm not gonna name names, what's going on over there? Well, the owner of the land, I know the guy's name, I'm not gonna state his name, he was not given permission, okay? He was not given an okay to cut those trees down, okay? This is what I was told. So he did not go, so, from what I was told at the Town Hall, they were gonna issue him a stop order permit, or stop, no more work on that, until he found out. So what I'm asking you guys, how does this, how does this get around? How does somebody come down, chop all the trees down, get away with it, and then the town checks afterwards, and it's too late, now all the trees are gone? So, and they know he's gonna build more townhouses there, just like that's ballooned. So I'd just like to, you guys, I guess you're doing all a good job, and it just, it's important to me, that's all I've got to say. File procedure, something is missing here, you know? You heard most of these folks here talk about, again, the, not going through with the, the road, Windsor Court. I mean, these houses are expensive, and, you know, but, I mean, it's ridiculous. But these were on, this was on a draw before and now, like I said before, I hear through the grapevine, you folks know already, and this is gonna happen at some time. That's kind of unfair to the people in Niskiuna, but thank you for what you do, and I'll see you at the Town Hall, the meeting, whatever it's coming next.
All right, thank you, sir. Privilege of the floor, anything else? No? Okay, seeing no one else for privilege of the floor, we're closed, privilege of the floor. We have no unfinished business tonight, we do have some new business to take care of. First on the new business, we have a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals on fourteen forty-eight Balltown. This is for a site plan approval and a greenhouse addition. I'll just kick it off, Mr. Khan. So basically, fourteen forty-eight Balltown Road, there's an application for an ACE hardware at this location, and through the discussions with the applicant, let me hold up a second, give everybody a chance.
And Chairman Walsh, do you mind if I just jump in? For those who had discussed, who brought up issues with being put on notice, the notice requirements for the public hearings for the planning board differ from the notice requirements for the town board. The town board public hearings are noticed in the daily gazette, so if this makes it to the town board for a special use permit, that will be advertised, noticed in the gazette, and also the town board will do that by resolution. Laura might be able to answer the specific radius, but I know notices were sent to neighbors within a certain vicinity of the...
Yeah, we went with the maximum that we're allowed to do, which is five hundred feet, but ours are noticed in the gazette as well.
Yeah, so people are, who talked about not knowing about it, anybody who lives within five hundred feet would have gotten a personal letter in the mail about it.
Five hundred feet, that's too proud.
Yeah, it's five hundred feet within the, to the property line, so it, so it's only gonna go five hundred feet down Windsor Road, and then everybody who's going along Barra Ridge is gonna get that notification. And I mean, that's the limit of our town code, but ours are posted in the gazette. We have the gazette here, and we encouraged articles, which was very helpful, and, I mean, certainly, putting the lawn signs up and doing everything that you guys did on Facebook, I mean, that's all something that we support. If we can do a better job online, we'll keep working on it. There's no, like, nefarious, like, let's not get the word out. The word is great, and we appreciate everybody coming here. We have limits on the mailouts by code. If we changed our code, we could possibly do that, but... I mean, there's, there, I mean...
Yeah, there's certain restrictions on our ability to do that, because then we would need to be doing email blasts for every project and make a qualitative, you know, a determination of whether or not we think it's important enough to, the entire town, to send an email blast on a specific development. So this is, you know, statutory notice requirements. But I'll turn the, you know, floor back to Chairman Walsh, I just wanted to, for everyone who is gonna stick around, that we're just gonna be discussing the develop, the proposed development this evening, we're not gonna be voting on it, so there'll be more to come.
And I just want to note that the agenda and the supporting materials are posted the Friday before the meeting, online on the town's website. And this project has been an ongoing discussion for quite a few meetings already, so it has been on the agenda with the renderings and everything else for several meetings. Additionally, the gazette actually ran several articles, three within the past two weeks.
Yeah, we try.
Okay. All right, let's get back to the, the agenda, fourteen forty-eight Balltown Road. So this is the ACE Hardware Store, and through working with the developer, we encourage, and the developer is, is interested in pursuing a greenhouse on the front of the store. In order to put a greenhouse on the front of the store, with the properties located in a neighborhood commercial zoning district, it has a setback, area variance is gonna be required. The setback from the street should be determined by the average setback of the principal building on each lot within five hundred feet of each side of the lot. As applied, the average front yard setback along this area of Balltown Road is eighty-seven feet. As proposed, the greenhouse addition extends to approximately forty-seven feet from the front property line, therefore, a forty-foot front yard setback variance is required. So it's this board's job to make a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals on the setback variance. And I don't know if you want to go ahead, or you want, you wanna, you have anything you want to say regarding that, or...
No, if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them, but you've pretty much summarized what the application is.
Right, so actually, the only question I have is, the numbers reflected here are accurate based on the latest drawings?
Yeah, I'm sorry. We received the updated drawing, and it was actually, we had estimated forty-six, and Nick had on his drawing forty-seven. So we updated the denial to forty-seven feet from the edge of Balltown. So yeah, it's all reflected in there, and I don't know, Nick did a new summary of the proposed plan, and your drawing is more accurate, so, and you're showing a twenty-two-foot drive, right?
That's correct.
Entirely contained on your property line.
Yeah. So, actually, as far as I'm concerned, you know, Mr. Flum and I talked about it briefly before the meeting, we've had discussions about this project. I think we're ready to answer the questions for the recommendation to ZBA concerned the, the greenhouse, which, you know, this board had recommended is a good characteristic of that property being used as an ACE hardware store.
Thank you.
Hopefully promote more walkability and not let us face the full impact of a thirty-one-car Delta, but...
That's right.
That's, um, so I think Chairman Walsh...
Chris? Could I just ask one question? Sure. What's durability of a variance? If the business were to go out of business, or change hands, or ownership, or change of use, would the variance stay in place for...
Yeah, the area variance applies to the building, not to the property owner. An area variance is different than a special use permit. So once the building is allowed to be built, to go that much farther towards the right-of-way, it can stay regardless of what the, what, you know, what tenant takes over the building.
But they wouldn't be able to change it from, say, a greenhouse to another structure, would they?
Um, I think so, yeah.
Well, the change of tenant process would pick that up, it would have to come through the board to make sure it was still appropriate and fitting.
It's an area variance footprint, it's not based on the use.
However, it's, it's very consistent with our comprehensive plan of walkability and making that frontage align with the rest of the neighborhood, so perpetuity would help align.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's a front door that's inviting people to walk to the building, and if a new tenant took over and wanted to remove the front door, that would be something planning board would look at and be like, no, thank you, like, we want to continue people, to encourage people to walk and use this door as part of a neighborhood. Yeah.
So just one other point, so if the, so if a tenant came in and wanted to expand out the, the greenhouse, you know, make it a permanent structure as opposed to a greenhouse structure, which is less than, let's just say, it's a, it's a, it's a weaker structure, we'll say. What kind of, what I'm trying to get to, is there any way to recapture or to require a build out of that space for a new tenant?
Well, I mean, it still has to meet code, so it's not going to be, I would say, less sturdy of a structure. It's, I mean, because it's a public, it's a public place under the commercial building code, it's just gonna be windows instead of like sheet rock. And if, if they wanted to come out and make it wider in the future, that would also then again trigger an area variance. So the footprint has to stay the same. If somebody wanted to come in and swap out the glass for sheet rock and make it not see-through, they might be able to do that with, you know, with a building permit rather than a planning board review, but I, it would sort of depend on the...
Right, but if that were to happen, and if there was a change of tenant, we'd at least be able to address that about, you know, the aesthetics and, you know... I guess my only, my only request would be somehow to memorialize in the minutes that the intention here is to build out this greenhouse as an accessory structure to the building, and that's just kind of an important point to make, that a subsequent tenant would come in, if you wanted to expand out that facility into a permanent, a more permanent structure, to extend out walls and an entrance, that, what's, what's important here is that it's, it's an accessory structure to this building for the purposes of an ACE hardware. So I'm trying to, I'm just trying to, trying to contain this.
It's not accessory, sorry, we just have to be careful with that language, not that you guys see it all the time, but as far as the zoning board goes, it is not an accessory structure. An accessory structure would be detached from the building, and, sorry, just to clarify for the record.
Fully noted.
Yeah.
I see where you're going there, Mr. Strube Tennis. I think, I think we should try and address that, I tend to agree, in, when we talk about suitability, we, we would hate to set some type of a precedent whereby CBS Six and, and the law firm want to now also extend forty feet closer to Balltown Road, the entire length of their building. This is more intended as a pedestrian access to a commercial use, it's not extending the full length of the building. It's got some aesthetic features that kind of identify this as a, as a pedestrian entrance, so anything we can do, I think, to show how this is not, you know, sets it apart from any other...
That's my intent.
More permanent.
So Laura, let's be, let's be clear on one thing. The, the width, lateral width along Balltown Road of the greenhouse, the setback variance applies to that width, right?
That's correct. And so if they were gonna add another ten feet, it would still trigger an area variance.
Look at the trajectory of other areas.
It's footprint.
So, so right now, as, that's why I asked the questions about the dimensions of the drawing, right? The, the, the way that greenhouse is drawn, the, it, the setback area variance only applies to that lateral extent of the greenhouse.
That's correct.
Twenty, twenty-five feet.
Yeah, so I'm sure we, we're good with that.
It's twenty-five feet on the front edge.
Just in short, right, I want to make sure that a subsequent, a subsequent user of the facility, unless it's, you know, florists or a hardware store, what's the adaptability of a greenhouse on the front of the building? And I just want to make sure, I mean, what will, what will, what could it, will it be utilized for if it's modified back into an office space or some other purpose? I'm trying to get my hands around this, this usage.
Yeah, so, so a subsequent user can use that space, I mean, provided again, it's re, whatever, right, whatever doesn't trigger a major change in usage, right? But they can actually use that space for conducting their business without triggering any other previous requirements.
Becomes usual.
But if they want to extend it this way and extend it that way, then that'll trigger another area variance.
I get that.
Yeah.
We're, we're increasing the rentable space of that building for the purpose of the accommodation of the front entrance.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, if somebody wanted to go in there and they didn't want the glass, although I would think that if it was a professional office, you could probably easily retrofit it to make it look like a very snazzy office entrance, but, um, if they wanted to, like, hardscape it, put brick on it, or, I don't know, hardy board or whatever, I'm looking at David, because I know so...
Yeah, so am I.
But if, if they wanted to do that, well, that would definitely trigger planning board review, because it's changing facade, but, I mean, you could, you know, brick it up in the same footprint and then just have it be a place, you know, like a waiting room or a place where people, you know? I mean, you could definitely use, repurpose it for something besides greenhouse. And it's almost like when you put a little, like, it's almost like the zoning board sees these all the time, when people have front steps out their house, and then they just enclose it a little bit more so that they have space to hang their, you know, winter jackets on and everything. This is just a larger scale, right? You could, you could have it just be like a place to catch heat and hang up jackets or whatever, you know? I mean, you could. I think that once you put all the glass there, you're probably not going to take it down, but it's possible.
I mean, I could see it being used as an atrium space, small gathering space if there's a tenant changeover, you know, it's got more uses probably than just a greenhouse. A lot of buildings are aluminum clad in glass, so, same, same decision.
Okay, maybe there'll be a mixed medium here, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to raise the point, and just for discussion. Thank you.
And that's, you know, that's the line, right?
That's the line.
That's the, that's the...
That's the bomb light, too, right? Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion on that before, before we go forward? No? Okay. All right, well, as...
Thanks for your...
Yeah, that's a good comment, thank you. So we asked the three questions to make our recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. First question being, effect of the comprehensive plan, Mr. Khan or Mr. Flum?
I'm sorry, the question is...
Effect on comprehensive plan.
Well, I mean, since a variance is required, it's not, the, the, it is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, however, we expect it'll have no effect on what the comprehensive plan requires by way of access and walkability. plan requires by way of access and walkability.
Right, the question is effect on a comprehensive plan.
It's not consistent with code. We struggle with this all the time. We really struggled with Mohawk comments the other day.
Right, but it's...
Not consistent with code, but we, we expect the effect of the comprehensive plan would actually reflect the comprehensive plan's requirement, you know, guidance on walkability, connectivity.
Right, so there's no effect on the comprehensive plan, right?
So not, not a negative.
Okay, so the, the recommendation, there's no effect on comprehensive plans, all those, I will do a show of hands, I believe there's no...
Kevin, can I?
Oh, we're going to get to it, we're going to have to document the reasons for our decisions too, right?
Well, I, well, I was just going to say before you vote, though.
Want to do them first?
Um, no, I just actually just want to know, it's kind of changed, I mean, you can say no effect or no negative effect, or you could say positive effect if you're adding an entrance to Balltown Road and you're increasing the walkability in the Town Center Overlay District. I mean, it's...
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah.
So in my notes, I had no negative effect is the way I was interpreting it.
Yeah, or, or could, yeah.
Because I think that's...
I, 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 I mean, my, my study of it, you know, gives me the statement of no negative effect also, which is what I stated earlier.
Yes, thank you. I actually had that written down, like, but, yeah, you can swing it either way, right? And...
Well, I mean, no, it's, it's a different statement, right?
Right.
So I think it's, it's no negative.
And it's how you support it, because we're going to have to get some information to the planner so they can document why we say there is no negative effect, right? So first, we'll start with, show hands, all those that believe there is no negative effect, please do so by showing hands, and that's unanimous, and then we'll get some basis for that decision. Do you want to start, Mr. Khan, or?
Right, and so the basis is that, so yes, where the code is concerned, a variance is required, however, there is a consistency with the comprehensive plan for that promoting that connectivity and walkability into the front store entrance.
Correct. Yep, and I would say, if you look at, in the comprehensive plan, it also talks about supporting economic development in this area. It'd be page thirty, seventy-three, seventy-four, comprehensive plan, so by having the people access and the walkability, that's also supporting the viability of the, the business at that location.
Yeah.
All right?
I mean, Laura, just to make clear, the, the no negative effect comes from the fact that the comprehensive plan is supposed to reflect the code, all right?
Yeah, not really. We struggle with this all the time.
I know, but, okay, so that's my view of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
Because I actually think when, and I'm sorry, I'm just disagreeing with you, but you actually, I think withheld your, you, you were, it was like a five-one because that's your stance on how you feel that question is asked.
That's right.
And I may disagree, I just might.
I, I interpret our comprehensive plan that it, it assumes a default reflection of our code.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I mean, it just seems like if you're asking for a variance, it's automatically understood that it's outside of our code. I mean, you're asking for relief from the code, but then I would be thinking that you'd be looking at the comprehensive plan for walkability for all those things that were stated.
Agreed, so, but to not belabor the point, right? If, if a variance becomes required for something that is promoted by the comprehensive plan, then there's something wrong with the code.
I'm sorry, but, but for every single variance that we ever ask, it's asking for the effect on comprehensive plan. So if you were going to say every single time that a variance...
But Laura, we don't say it every single time, right?
Right, I know, but every single time, there's, if a variance is needed, then it's not consistent with code.
And, and we've, we've ruled before that certain things were not consistent.
Yeah, I think we're trying to get a little bit firmer on, you know, it's not, it's not impacting the comprehensive plan by adding a greenhouse, even though the zone...
It doesn't have a negative impact.
Okay. The other thing, Laura and board members, there's an issue area about pedestrian movement in the comprehensive plan, page twenty-one, I think that's something also that demonstrates that there's no negative effect, in fact, there's, you know, it's positive for the comprehensive plan, okay?
Yeah, it's all, yeah.
Got that? Okay. All right, next question, is there enough there, Laura, do you have there with that?
I just had one other comment I wanted to make, just in the comprehensive plan, I think this may answer some resolved questions about whether the, how to harmonize the plan with the zoning code. So one of the information, implementation tasks that was recommended that was not implemented yet was with respect to the town overlay, center overlay district, was to make appropriate changes to the zoning ordinance and zoning map. And it specifically addresses setbacks requirements along, in the town overlay, and it says, you know, future building development should maintain continuous setbacks that establish and promote pedestrian activity. So here, although this is, be going against the continuous setbacks, it is actually promoting pedestrian activity. So I think that the plan actually speaks to this exact situation. It's less conceptual than it is in other instances.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're good.
We already voted, right? We already voted.
Why it's there. Do you have any other supporting information on no negative effect on the comprehensive plan? Did you have enough, Laura?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so next question.
It improves aesthetics too, though.
Pardon?
I think it also improves the aesthetics.
Yeah.
Solid walls, not all that attractive.
It improves usability. So, Mr. Khan or Mr. Laflamme, suitability for use in the area proposed?
Yes.
So it is suitable?
Yes.
The, the recommendation to zoning board of appeals? Okay, all those in favor that it is suitable, please show hands, and that's unanimous also, and some basis for that. Also, I see in the comprehensive plan, subarea, it was a B5, page thirty-four, and it's to encourage pedestrian friendly development. So, you know, obviously just does that because it's the whole goal, is to have the greenhouse so people can walk from Balltown Road from the sidewalk to access this retail business. It's commercial to commercial, so that's why I think it's suitable. It isn't like we're changing zoning. And we also have a vacant property, so it's suitable, so it also helps the reuse of existing versus the building of new, which we hear is always a concern. So, so reuse of the structure, I think, is also important why it's suitable. Did I miss anything, or anybody have anything else?
No. When we talked about traffic impact, I think we also, one thing that, one takeaway was that it could be on off-peak times that we would see peak traffic for this site, which was...
A benefit.
Nice.
Yeah.
And do we want to add that it's not the length of the entire building? It's an entrance, just to distinguish it from potential future requests, or do we not? You can do that, that's your guys'...
Sure, no, I, I think...
Well, I mean, it's that way, but if we can make it clear, I'd be more comfortable with that.
Well, so tech, the drawing's attached, and I think it's limited to...
Yeah, no, it definitely is.
So, I don't know, it's needed.
Okay.
It doesn't hurt to over-communicate, right?
Yeah.
Sometimes it does. Because then if you aren't consistent in over-communicating, it's, well, you didn't say this, maybe you didn't mean it.
Well, I guess the only reason if we would want to communicate it, which is what Patrick and I think Mike were speaking to, is if you didn't want to see large extensions going on on the front of the buildings, then you might want to distinguish this one as an, like, as a covered entrance, not like a whole entire building front moving forward. But, you know, if our code says bring all the buildings forward, then maybe you don't want to make that distinction.
Yeah, but the code will change and the area, another variance wouldn't be required.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't know, that's up to you guys.
Okay.
You okay with the...
I mean, I'm okay with making it clear that we're talking about this, I, I don't think it's actually working.
Is anybody opposed to that? Okay, we just let the record show that Ms. Gold is opposed to that. All right, and the final thing is the recommendation to zoning board of appeals, Mr. Khan or Mr. Laflamme?
Recommend that they grant the variance.
Recommendation is that the variance for the greenhouse and the setback for fourteen-forty-eight Balltown be granted. All those in favor signify by just raising your hand, and that's unanimous. So I know, Laura, you'll write this up and send it on to the zoning board of appeals, and that'll be at the next meeting, which is...
It's not this Wednesday, next Wednesday.
Oh, it's, it's next month.
Yeah, so, no, it's next Wednesday, so it's like March eighteenth, something like that.
March eighteenth? Okay, so...
Good luck.
Yeah, so that'll be written up, and it'll go to the zoning board of appeals, and obviously if they grant the variance, it'll be part of the future design as we go through the final reviews for this project. Yes, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Costa? Do you have anything? Okay. Thank, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Chairman Walsh.
Nope, public discussion is over for tonight, sir. Okay?
I know.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Let's see, next thing we have under new business is a resolution twenty, twenty dash eleven, and let me just find my, there we go. Resolution twenty, twenty dash eleven, a resolution for site plan approval for a Pure Bar Boutique Fitness Studio at four twelve Balltown Road, Suite D. And we have the resolution, and keeping with our process, resolution's been posted, we have, everybody has a copy of it, but bottom line is, this is, the planning board and zoning commission finds the reference site plan for Pure Bar Site meets requirements of the zoning code and previous site plan approvals, and therefore hereby approves the site plan and tenant change. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution? So moved, moved by Mr. Laflamme, do I have a second?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Scribby Tennis, and I know we're going to want to have a little bit of discussion here on this one, okay? We don't have a project lead on this one, but I'll jump in. So the, the, everything looks good, took a look, you know, I think it's, you know, again, talk about filling vacant space with an appropriate business, you know, I think this is great. The only comment that we received from the planning office, because, you know, we're trying to move this along to help you out here, is that, just that, you know, the parking can get challenging, if everybody parks in front of the building, that would be on the west side, I guess, of the building. So we want to encourage the parking on the south side of the building, because there seems to be, I want to say an abundance, but opportunities there, right?
Yeah, it's pretty tight on the front side of the building with the other businesses.
So there was a, a comment that we should consider amending the resolution about the, the sidewalk that accesses the, that south side parking, whether that curb should be cut so that it's handicapped, accessible, and, and if, and if it's cut and it's accessible, it'll kind of, for, you know, the visual effect, it'll, you know, hopefully would encourage parking over there and would make access easier, not only for, for this business, but for any of those shops along that road, because I took a look today and actually to get up onto the top of that sidewalk, you got to go down quite a ways to...
Get around there.
Yeah, you got to go all the way around, out in the road through the parking lot to come up to get up on, and then come back, you know, to any businesses, not just yours, of course. Is that something that you'd be willing to consider, at least to cutting the curb there and putting that ADA compliant walkway, or is that something that the, the landlord would take care of on your behalf?
I'm totally for it. I, I think maybe I'd have to talk to the landlord about changing that part, but I, I don't see any problem with it.
You know, the planning department also noted that, you know, whether or not there should be any parking signage or striping, had a little bit of a discussion before the meeting with the town planner. The concern with the striping is, is that it leads nowhere, it leads to parking spots, so I didn't think that was appropriate, and getting this is for the board's information, if anybody has any opinions, we're glad to, to listen. And then if you, signage, I mean, we got enough signs to put a sign that says park there, I don't think that's really going to do anything, because if it's full in front, people are going to park there anyway, or if that curb cut is there, they're naturally going to park on that side and, you know, and access your business from that location. Right? Does, does anybody else have any thoughts or comments regarding it?
I think curb cuts are key.
Yeah.
The pedestrian curb cut.
Yeah. So, so I think we're in general agreement, the curb cut, I think, would be beneficial for not only you, but the other businesses along there, and hopefully the, the landlord's okay with it, or the landlord would take care of doing it for you.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, so I'm going to, there are some suggestive words. Prior to building permit, the applicant shall provide specifications to the planning department for a curb, curb cut to the south side of the building for review and approval by the town planner. That way, we can get your approval tonight, and then you can just follow up with the landlord and come on in and make sure that the town planner is satisfied, you know, that it meets ADA compliance and that, you know, it's the correct cut, and you won't have to come back to the board then.
And anyone that rented that space, you'd probably require that same curb cut.
Uh, yes, we had these discussions before, and there was, I can't remember who was proposed to be there.
Be Good.
Be Good, yeah, so, and so, Ms. Robinson, you know, reminded us, we had these discussions before.
Okay.
And again, the parking is one of the reasons it really drives in access, so, so I'm going to, if you take a look at your package there, team, here's, we can just strike sidewalk and parking signage in the agenda statement, and then what we would do is, I'm going to make a recommendation that we amend the resolution to include one condition, the condition being prior to building permit, the applicant shall provide specifications to planning department for a curb cut to the south side of the building for review and approval by the town planner. So I'm going to make that motion that we modify the resolution added condition, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Khan, any other discussion? No? Okay, so what we have now is we have, I guess, we'll do, show hands to modify the resolution as proposed, we do show hands. So everybody in favor of that? You're in favor, yep, so we're all in favor, okay, of modifying the resolution, amending the resolution. So we have an amended resolution, any other discussion at all?
Just one, one question, in the narrative that Laura wrote up, of your operational schedule, Monday through Sunday, five AM to nine PM, and there's a mock-up inside of your signage?
Yeah, that is, uh, that's not accurate.
That's representative sample.
Yeah, we're going to, I'm going to get that ordered later, once we have the actual schedule.
So the, the signage is just a mock-up, that's not the correct hours?
They made that.
Okay, all right, that's a good point, I did see that also.
So what, just out of here, what, what would be your hours of operation?
Um, we don't have a class schedule now, but it could be something along the lines of five AM to nine, nine AM, yes.
Do you have a class beginning at five AM?
Uh, yes, sir.
Do you want to state anything about the business at all while you have an opportunity?
Um, I'm excited to come to the community, I think it's a very positive business that'll bring a lot to the community.
And, and the business, Pure Bar, could you...
Pure Bar is a ballet bar-based fitness workout that utilizes elements of yoga, Pilates, and ballet, and it originated, its, its root is from the Lottie Burke method, which is to help injured dancers stay in shape, in between, while they're injured, yeah, so...
Great.
Yeah.
Are you an instructor?
I'm not an instructor, I'm everything but an instructor, yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for the applicant?
I have taken over two hundred and fifty, probably, Pure Bar classes since, I've been involved with Pure Bar since two thousand and twelve, so...
Is there another location within the region?
There will be a location in Latham, New York, and possibly two other locations, but we're not sure what areas, yet.
Right. I noticed on the, on the layout, the interior floor plan, it looks like the back door access is very close to some cubicles and, and restrooms, and it, it's my feeling that there should be some sign on that door to discourage entry and exit by your customers through...
Yes, I, I agree, yeah, okay.
So that'd just be emergency exit, exit only, right? And it's nice because it's a music-based workout.
Correct.
So I noticed it's not against the other tenant, it's against on the outside wall with the hallway next to the other tenant, so it would minimize any impact on the existing business.
Yeah, deliberately planned it that way.
Exactly, and Laura picked up on that, yeah, also, so thank you.
The lieutenant might blame your TVs loudly.
Yeah.
As Clark, actually.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, are the classes limited to people with a dance background?
Oh, no, all, all, it's, it's available for everyone, yeah, it's, it just, it stems from that method, but it's, it's really a workout that anyone can do.
Okay, any other questions?
Do you have an age requirement?
Uh, I think uh, sixteen with a parent's signature, and then sixteen and up. We've had clients, and one of our businesses, uh, like, seven years old, and, and she loved it, everything, so.
Okay, I guess that's okay.
Okay. Alright, so we have a, a motion for an amended resolution on the floor. Uh, Ms. Shiget, would you please call the roll?
Mr. LaFlem?
Aye.
Mr. Scribby Tennis?
Aye.
Mr. Khan?
Aye.
Mr. McPartland?
Aye.
Mr. Darpino?
Aye.
Ms. Gold?
Aye.
Chairman Walsh?
Aye, resolution's approved, um.
Great, thank you very much.
Good luck, and just work with Laura and your, your tenant regarding the curb cut, and uh, good luck with the business.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that's it, under new business, I'll take his right to discussion items, you know, and first up being twenty-five thirty-eight River Road, special use print, major subdivision for the Kelts Farm property. Um, I get, I don't know if you guys wanna take it over, you want me to? I don't, Mr. Costa, was he here? Is he, is he representing you tonight, or are you on your own tonight?
No. No, he left.
You left, I wasn't sure if he,
Yeah.
lived here or not, but, um, basically, we heard from the public tonight, and um, got quite a few notes, so thank you everybody for your, your comments. Um, the only thing I'd like to say is that, again, it's a work in progress, I know, um, the town attorney and, and Laura addressed the, uh, the notice that's out there, you know, we follow the rules that are in place for us to follow, as far as the notice goes. Uh, one thing I can say is that I think transparency, transparency has improved over the years, if you take a look at the website, which, the, the agenda for this is always uh, uh, put up on the uh, website on a Friday for our meeting here, and it's a complete agenda with every piece of paper that we get, so, the public sees exactly the package that gets delivered to our homes uh, every weekend, so you, uh, it's completely transparent. Uh, there's been no backdoor deals or pre-approvals, their whole purpose of tonight's uh, public hearing was to hear what everybody has to say, so as we work through this progress, we take into consideration your concerns, and hopefully address those uh, to the satisfaction of the townspeople, the best possible solution for everybody, not, you know, for everybody, and uh, um, one of the things too, I, I, you know, just like to mention is that, uh, you know, the stub road being there, I think, uh, one of the speakers talked about that, and I know that the builder may not have told you anything, but, if you go down Windsor, you, you can clearly see the, the stub road, uh, we've had some other past developments where we didn't put a stub road in, uh, and we always try to include a stub roads, because that's like a, a warning sign, like, hey, you know, this, this road may be extend, uh, so we try to do that purposefully, so that, you know, people can hopefully see with the future, because even if you, your builder did tell you the homes get sold, right, and somebody new comes in, uh, and again, hopefully, um, uh, you know, you see, A, the stub, and B, you take a look at the, you know, the comprehensive plan of the town, and if you do take a look at the comprehensive plan and the proposed town map, it shows a connection right now, and those documents that have been in the uh, the reference town map, uh, from Windsor State coming out the River Road, maybe not exactly the way it's proposed, but there was a uh, a dotted line there showing the road for the future, um, and that's why, uh, we've asked the applicant, we'll say, you know, we'll admit, we asked the applicant to make sure you show the connection, because that's, I don't wanna say it's the worst-case scenario, but it's probably the most controversial scenario, so that's why we want to do that, to be able to hear what everybody has to say, and to make sure we take that into consideration in the planning process. Uh, you know, benefits and detriments of making that connection as we go through the process, okay? Um, you want me to turn over to you guys, or you want me to?
I, I, I guess there is one question from the public hearing that I, I do wanna bring up. Regardless of what happens in the future with Kelts Farm, I think all the residents were clear that speed is an issue on the road.
I wrote that down a lot.
So, as far as I'm concerned, I think, I think something needs to be put into place to solve the speeding issue, right, do you guys agree, right?
Yeah, totally agree, that's a, that's a good comment, yeah.
And that would be something that the town board would have to tend to, not us.
Agreed, but I mean, I guess, you know, I, I think we need to make them aware of the fact that, I know one of the difficulties in the road from remembering what the road looks like is there's actually no straight intersections, alright?
There isn't any four-way straight intersections.
There's no four-way intersections.
I think like Menlo Park and stuff come off pretty ninety-degree angles.
Yeah.
But not, not a four-way.
There isn't a four-way.
Except for at the stop sign, yeah, very good point. I think through traditional methods to calm traffic, we could, we could get there, but, but it would be our suggestion to the town board, you know, based on the feedback we're hearing.
Yeah, and that, thank you for bringing that up, I circled that many times, the speed thing, and I do try to attend town board meetings, if not, I do watch some, by the way, this will be broadcast on YouTube, uh, broadcasting live right now, and you have the opportunity to go back and play back any of this at any time, just, log onto YouTube and go to Town in this unit, the planning board meeting will be there available for you, and past meetings and future meetings, by the way, if you can't make it. Uh, but uh, it is a common thing, you know, I know Mrs. Avon goes to town board meetings and, you know, other people here, is that uh, speed is, is constant, and I know the town is working hard on it, I know the Public Safety Committee uh, is working with the police department, but uh, it's true that the speed's a problem, we heard that a lot tonight, and uh, I'm sure the town board members will probably be watching, or, uh, well, you know, this meeting tonight, um, and will get, make sure to get the message, and I know they already understand that. Um, and what's, it's interesting too, is, you know, I live off of River Road, and uh, yeah, I do forty where it says forty, I, I agree, you know, it's the same there, it's the same on Rosendale, there was one speaker, I can't remember the gentleman's last name, but uh, he, he comes in front of the town board quite often about the concerns uh, down along, what's his last name?
Mike Cella.
Cella, you know, he, you know, he's been a strong advocate for uh, the problems and reducing the problems with speed in our, in our town. Um, and in, in, in a lot of the locations, like when you're talking like Windsor and some of, Rosendale Estates and some of those roads, it's our neighbors that are speeding, a lot of times, it's not, it's not people that are passing through from Schenectady, I mean, there's, I'm sure there's a certain percentage of them, but a lot of times, it's our own neighbors, you know? And so, uh, same people that may come in here and say, hey, they're speeding in my neighborhood, you know, gets out of here and tailgates somebody all the way back home and hurry, you know? And, and it's a, in a fact of life, and I, so we'll make sure that the, you know, the town board knows, I'm, I'm sure they will. Um, and, and, and as we go forward with the process, uh, and do an evaluation of, of where we wanna go forward, we'll, you know, consider that, and we'll consider other traffic calming measures, which there's a lot of different measures that you can use to try to, to make it an undesirable cut through or to limit the speed. Uh, and we can talk about that.
One person mentioned a good idea, and that was a speed table, I mean, we could put a speed table at the connection too. We could put it on my property too, or, you know, we have to dig up Windsor to run the fifteen-inch sewer line, the Windsor stub, okay? You know, from, from Briar Ridge down, okay, that stub, we have to dig that up anyways to, to make the fifteen-inch sewer line. So it'd be very easy for us to put a speed table at that point. And I think you all know that you can't put stop signs on three ways just to calm traffic, you know, it's against the law, so.
Even though it seems like it does occur, quite, you know, quite frequently, but uh, you're not supposed to be using stop signs, it's from my experience, right, to manage speed problems.
But I,
Because, you know.
I talked to Frank Gavin about the history of this too, and one speaker did mention it, is that this is a local connector road, it's a kind of eighty-four foot right-of-way, so it was meant to go through at one time, alright, and it did have yellow stripes and white stripes at one time, until it was repaved. And I think only, there's only several streets in town, town roads, the, the county and the, we're one forty-six, of course, have stripes, but, there, there's not many, I can't think of a street in this unit.
Not Street East Extension, this one.
There you go.
Yeah, I think that's pretty much.
So that part that wasn't paved still has the stripes, but I think the only way to calm traffic on that is the speed table.
Yeah. You know, I, I mean, that's why I brought the point about the fact that there's no intersection where you can legally put a stop sign.
Yeah. Oh, you can.
It might be able to do like mini roundabouts, potentially, although people who live there sometimes get annoyed.
Oh, jeez, that, that's.
But they definitely slow down traffic.
I mean, you heard the one speaker that, you heard the one speaker that complained about the sidewalk, I mean, the sidewalk benefits the whole town, you know, so there's one dissension that's, as, we didn't like the sidewalk, and when Sotile was forced to put that sidewalk in, there was a lot of people that complained, but those same people came in here with track shoes on and everything, and they were using that walk. The walk, you know, I canvassed that street, and a lot of people use that walk, and a lot more people will, will use it once we connect through to, to the park and put the flashing, you know, whatever we do at the crossing, but we make the crossing safer, you know, two ways, with the flashing and petitioning the county to lower the speed limit.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
And, um, just looking through my notes, if you don't mind, one thing that, you know, I heard is about, you know, the school, you know, the uh, the potential impact on the schools and on the, the school realignment, you know, redistribution of the students and everything. Uh, I, I do know that, I mean, at least annually, uh, the town, uh, and town planners, including those meetings, we try to give the uh, school board or the school administration, an update on what's, what's looking ahead in this unit as far as development, so they can consider that, um, and, you know, and we, so.
Yeah, for this big study that they did with these, with this big bond, they reached out to us when they were building these alternatives, and asked for all the projects that were in the pipe or could be in the pipe. And yeah, I mean, we gave them a list of everything we had, so I'm, some, a majority of the units that we're looking at, potentially looking at, are built into that plan.
I, you know, I've been here twenty-eight years, and I've spent a lot of money in this unit's taxes, and school taxes, town taxes are great, you know, very efficient town taxes, but, I frankly don't see how we could spend seventy million, million dollars and where these kids are coming from, I mean, a lot of people complaining twenty-four more houses, but these, are meant to be people like me that wanna downsize into a townhouse or an executive ranch, you know, get out of the big house, you know? And, I mean, I could tell you the names of the people that have come to me already, I mean, I got a guy on, um, oh, I forgot the name.
Yeah, no, there's no question, we have a need for diversity of housing in this unit, we hear that a lot.
This project doesn't.
And again, that's identified in the comprehensive plan, you know, as, uh, you know, being able to, to serve the community, especially uh, as the community ages, you know? Um, uh, you have another comment, um, uh, the flashing, you know, the crosswalk, you know, right now, there's nothing, I mean, there's striping there, right, a sign, right, but yes, it's difficult to see anybody, and it's dangerous, so this, you know, part of this project would be to improve that, possibly relocate it.
Yeah.
Um, and then to put in either motion-activated or, or pedestrian-activated signaling, so it wouldn't be flashing all the time, I know Laura, I think you're working on the, the Rosendale one, because that is a problem with, uh, when it continually flashes, A, it's annoying for anybody that lives right nearby it, and B, that people just get immune to it, because it's always flashing.
I couldn't have it continuously flashing, my cousin would be calling me up, like, saying, Joel, why's that light flashing?
No, it's not meant to be continuously flashing.
It would have to be,
Yeah.
I like the idea of the button, by the way.
Button or motion activated.
The motion, some guy, some Lance, you know, coming up on a bike thinks he's gonna hit the motion and people are gonna stop, well, that may not happen, I think pushing the button is a real good idea.
Well, we'll look at that as part of the process, um, let me do something else, um.
Oh, you're finding that, I looked up the difference between a speed table and a speed bump, I figure other people are probably confused too, the tables are longer and flat.
Yeah.
And the intent is for the entire wheel to wind up on it.
Yeah.
Right, the highway department doesn't like speed humps or bumps.
No.
They prefer the, the table, because with plowing and everything, you know? Um, as far as the average density development, I know this was, there was talked about, uh, you know, agriculture and the um, uh, leaving a buffer, yes, it was a flower farm, I guess, so that's why it's pretty much uh, uh, void of trees already, at least part of it, but it does extend down a little bit further to the, to the east where there are trees, you know?
That's a total misconception, that kinda annoyed me too, because the people have to go down there and look at the trees that are there, okay? I mean, with this buffer, we went through great pains, like, I lost four building lots to come up with this buffer, so with the R1, I could've got twenty-eight, I go down to twenty-four to give this beautiful buffer, and, you know, essentially all the trees that are left, that they didn't already cut down, okay, and I didn't cut those down, I did tear the barn down, I tore the house down, but, the house was derelict, but the buffer is a huge buffer, I mean, there's a lot of acreage there. And you heard somebody mention too, Kevin, and I think I saw everybody taking notes like I was, is that they wanted to preclude any future development in the buffer. And I kinda made a tick mark that the way to do that is to deed it to the town, not to put it into an HOA.
That's true.
If you leave it in the HOA, the HOA could get greedy someday and come back here and say, well, hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna carve that up and set, sell it to the neighbors, you know what I mean? Because we're tired of cutting the trees and worrying about the liability of that, of that buffer zone, you know? And I think I've heard that from the town before too, is that the town's also worried about cutting the trees and the liability, but then the town wants me to plant trees in the right-of-way, so they're responsible for them, so that's kind of a, you know, I go before the, you know, Conservation Action Advisory Committee or in the Tree Committee, and they say, we want trees in the right-of-way, and I planted them, you know, on the first property, so now we gotta put them in the right-of-way. Then the town doesn't wanna take this beautiful tree buffer, because they don't want the responsibility, so.
Well, sometimes, I mean, that can be our recommendation, if we want the town to own it and deed restrict it.
I, I really think that's, I really think that's the way to go, not that I'll avoid the HOA, but.
Typically, the open space would be more parkland that would require a decent amount of maintenance, so an HOA would own it, because you would have, you know, grass and picnic tables and usable space for the additional.
I don't know, I gave up, I mean, I gave up eight acres on,
No, I know, but we.
No, excuse me, on Oakmont, and it's wetlands, you know, the town doesn't do any maintenance on it, you know, so.
No, but if you read the code, it specifically says that you, you should speak to the usability of the open space, but I think in this case, we determined, because there's a park across the street, and we've been losing a lot of forest and trees that, on lands that we have, like, you know, limited control over, that it makes more sense to leave this as forest and allow that as intact habitat, or allow it to go back as intact habitat. But under our code, when we're looking at average density development, we specifically speak to what the usability is of the conservation space that's left.
Okay, but do you want it with the town or the HOA?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, typically it goes with the HOA, but if we're determining that it's gonna be an intact forest habitat, we could recommend to the town to take it under a deed restriction, that's, the planning board has the right to decide what they want to do there.
Yeah.
And it's ultimately the town board's decision.
I mean, yeah, we got a park across the street, but it'd be nice to have two parks, a lot of, a lot of the people complain about lack of green space, so here we're, we're creating green space, let's, let's use it, town.
Yeah, uh, and the other thing, I don't know, you mentioned, and I didn't either, is that this is Zoned R1 eighteen thousand square foot lot.
Right.
So you're proposing an average density development, right? Uh, which reduces, you know, reduces the lot size by fifty percent, down to nine thousand square feet, and with the extra area being turned over to open space.
That's correct.
Alright, um, but you could, you know, if came before the board and said, I just wanna build, you know, twenty, however many, that's up for, you say twenty-eight, Conservation Advisory, guys, I might say twenty-two, okay?
Right.
So it depends on, you know, again, the wetlands, as mentioned tonight, you know, that's all gonna be taken into consideration, this is early in the process, right, it's, the wetlands have, I think they've already been delineated, but.
It's not really early in the process, because I mean, we spent a lot of time delineating these wetlands, okay, and.
I understand, what I meant is for approvals and everything, okay, but yes, you got to work around them, or you're gonna have to mitigate the wetlands, right, either onsite or offsite.
I mean, we've, we've done that, and with this plan, we don't impinge on any wetlands, okay? We impinge on the wetlands if we have to connect the road through, alright, and then our plan was to take and mitigate those, that wetlands crossing by increasing the wetlands to the north. Right. And that's, that's a simple swap, you know, I, I look back at the um, the Windsor Drive development plans, okay, and the wetlands plans, and I got, I got them from the Kelts, okay? And somebody addressed that, wow, that's all wetlands, well, hello, Windsor was all wetlands, right? And they mitigated it by creating that retention pond and moving in, in this triangular piece near uh, the stub. So there was a bunch of pockets of wetlands on Windsor that Sotile and Hodorowski and, and Joe, you know, mitigated by, doing a swap, and that's the same, same thing that we would do. And I mean, that's, that's a big question though, Kevin, in the details, so, like, when we go to the Army Corps, you know, are they gonna allow us to do that? Do they think this is a critical, um, critical issue, alright? And we'll say it's on the comprehensive plan of this unit, it's been on the plan since nineteen eighty, you know, and this is important to the connectivity of the town, and we're swapping, we could give them one, two to one even, I mean, we could take this acre and give them two acres over here, you know?
Again, doing a lot of talking here, I don't, David or Patrick, you guys have some thoughts?
I think one of the things we talked about at the last meeting was, um, not segregating this development from the rest of the community, and that's one of the reasons we wanted to see the road connection go through. So even though there's two points of entry on River Road for this development, there's now a third access, which we'd be going back through, you know, the comp plan, doesn't really promote developments that are kind of cul-de-sacs or segregated, um, we don't wanna see that. A lot of municipalities near us dump everything onto a feeder road, and it just exacerbates traffic worse, even at peak times and off-peak times. So that's one of the reasons I think we wanted to really explore this. Having the road built directly through without a curve or two curves or bending around would, would, is probably not something we would want to see.
Yeah.
And it did not come up in any plans that we have seen to date, and I, quite frankly, I wouldn't promote that, but I think at least this is the beginning of saying, we're not trying to make a cut through, we're trying to give another alternate for a neighborhood to use that road and connect that neighborhood, not only closer to Blatton Park, but also to the town center.
Yeah.
And I think the other things with the bike path, um, definitely getting that incorporated in to this, connecting over where that connects over to Blatton Park and the extension, is something that we're gonna vet out pretty heavily. And, and again, what, I spent last week going down there at various hours in the morning, counting cars, watching traffic, staying there till after seven-thirty when the high school got dropped off, and there's quite a bit of traffic that comes out on, on Windsor, then tails off, it picks back up again, so there's, there, there's peak times, and, you know, I'm gonna continue to do that, check it out in the afternoons, go on Saturdays and, and just see what the volume is, and with the, with the nicer weather too, I think I counted about fifty people walking.
Yeah.
In that area, I mean, heavily, heavily walking.
It is.
And not just in the bike path, they used the road too, so, I mean, they're, they're all over the place, but, you know, there's, there, there is a potential for this development to become part of that community. And the best way to connect that, whether the road is there or not, we, we wanna really, really thoroughly vet out.
Well, you've noticed I've tempered.
Yeah, I mean,
I'm, if you guys want the road, I'll build the road, okay, but you've heard a lot of people on Windsor complain about it, so, I think what we have to do is create traffic calming to make sure that we only have the local traffic, not the regional traffic that, you know, we're worried about, you know?
Yeah, and I put it in the agenda statement, and it's also a town board action, but the engineer, um, the idea was to put a weight, weight limit on that road, which is gonna restrict the truck traffic, because there's no reason for truck, truck, truck traffic to go down that road.
So, when we've had situations similar to this in the past, we, we've had some kind of forum or something where we get to engage with the community in a discussion, right?
And we can, we always have that ability.
And, and I'm putting that on the table as something, because, you know, the, the key point here is, proper planning for now and for the future, the way the town's been laid out, the way the comprehensive plan reflects it, the way the plan's reflected from the past, says that the, the, the right thing to do here is to connect Windsor Drive downers. Nobody wants a thoroughfare, nobody wants people speeding through their neighborhoods, nobody, no one, doesn't matter where we live, where in this unit we live, right? And the question always comes down to the, the immediate real desire and, you know, concerns of the people who are living there compared to, what the town looks like as a well-organized, well-thought-out, well-planned-out, well-laid-out, well-connected town a hundred years from now. Literally, I'm not being in a. Literally, I'm not being exaggerating because we've been around for 100 years, right? Whatever that math is, right? So, so we, I think an engagement with the immediate community that's affected and some kind of discussion might be something that I think we would want to do, right?
We could really set that up.
And that's why I'm saying that, I mean, if we could regulate that there's only this type of car that can come down Windsor Drive and not these other kinds and only at this speed, I think we need to go as far as we can go in regulating safe car conveyance down that roadway, whether this connection is there or not.
Mm-hmm. So Laura, I have a question just in past practice. So I'm just referring to the, the section of the code that speaks to average density developments. And so it requires that after we hold, the planning board conducts a public hearing. In a reasonable period of time, we may report to the town board. So, I mean, how have you interpreted the reasonable period of time? Because, I mean, you know the structure, monthly meetings of the town board. Do you interpret it as that we could hold multiple public hearings until we're comfortable with reporting to them?
Um, it's essentially the code really, it's one public hearing.
Yes, that's what I was.
And if you wanted to continue it, you're supposed to hold it open. But that doesn't preclude having community information sessions and dialogues and any other type of planning exercise that we can. But, I mean, just because of precedent and because of fairness to developers and stuff, and actually some legal defensible things that we have to do, you really can only require one public hearing. And if you want to continue, I mean, the comment had ended. So if there is an outstanding item, you could hold the public hearing open. But otherwise, it has to be closed. And then, like Jengus is saying, you're having community conversations. And I love community conversations and I can happily set them up.
And let's, look, let's be clear, right? And it's come up before, I'm just saying it to make it clear, right? The developer doesn't want to put a road in.
But I will.
Right? The developer will do what the planning board requests of him based on what our planning principles are, right? So it's more an engagement with the community to talk about, like I said, the immediate concerns that you've gotten, you've raised versus what planning something looks like the right way, right? As opposed to creating a cutoff cul-de-sac neighborhood that's completely against all the planning principles and our comprehensive plan local to us, right? That, you know, 20 years down the road, someone looks and said, why don't you guys just connect this, right? Because for me to get the shop right or for me to get to the high school, I've got to actually deal with River Road and G traffic and Capitol and all that stuff and come around. I know we all have our ways, right? But the point is, is that what does proper planning do? And I'll make the same thing came up before, right? The stub road was there.
That's right.
Right?
That's all, that happens all the time. Okay.
So we need to schedule, so for the, I'll answer, right? We need, so, so I'm gonna recommend that we set an event where we can have an open conversation with the concerned neighbors in the residence.
And in the spirit of what Mr. Khan is saying, I think, I think it goes to, I think it's already understood that the area of influence is much broader than just Windsor. So even though our letters went out 500 feet, that wasn't enough, obviously. But it probably needs to be a little broader. Like you had said, this is really a decision for the greater community, not just the immediate community. So I would just hope that if we do have a community feedback session, dialogue, that it's a little bit, just a little bit broader than the immediate area.
You know, like.
Jump in one thing just.
Like David, I said, sorry, is that I also walked Windsor.
Me too.
For the whole weekend, okay? And I was really surprised about the traffic that came off of Briar Ridge. So, I mean, it's pretty intuitive that, you know, if we put this connection in, that it's gonna take, it's gonna relieve the chestnut in the Menlo Park. So those people are all for it, okay? And if this was a straight shot through, God forbid, it would be a regional road, okay? But now we have a local connector road, Windsor, connecting to a local road, okay? So that's calming as it is. So we're not, we're gonna put in a 64-foot versus an 84-foot. So when the road is skinnier, people drive slower, you know, because it's not a huge, all right? And we have a right-hand turn, all right? We can't put a crosswalk, or we can't put a stop sign there, but we're crossing it with the bike path. So we're gonna put a crosswalk there.
Right.
All right, so they're gonna see, they're gonna come up to make this right-hand turn or left-hand turn from the south side of the loop. And they're gonna have a crosswalk there. So they're not gonna be screaming through that intersection, all right? And then if they get through that and they get brave, well, I see this long straight shot up Windsor now, well, hey, they're gonna hit my speed table. You know, so I say, if it's in the comprehensive plan, all right? And the plan, the planning board is here to implement the comprehensive plan. And like Mr. Khan said, is that, you know, we're looking forward 100 years and people are gonna say, why, why didn't we connect? Why do we have segregated, you know, cul-de-sacs all over the place, okay? Then the recommendation from this planning board should be, put the connection through, put it as is because it's pretty calming as it is now, put a speed table, maybe we get out a speed table, all right? Somebody mentioned a weight limit for trucks. And we had talked about when we put this median in on the north side, no guy in a tractor trailer is gonna make that turn with a median in there, you know? So the median's gonna preclude that. And we could put a median on the south side too. So, you know.
Well, it would be a weight limit on that signage, right? So there would, hopefully, it'd only be local deliveries only, which occur already, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, those kind of tick off everything. And then, then what's gonna happen is that the planning board makes the recommendation, all right? Then it goes to the town board and there's gonna be a hearing. And then, then it becomes political because then the town board has to grant me a special use permit. And they're gonna hear from all the neighbors that are opposed to it, all right? So that's the process. I mean, I got a timetable. I don't want to wait one or two years, you know, to do this work. I mean, I got customers that want an empty nest right now, all right? So I say, the planning board, if you sit in these roundtables, by the way, and I went to Rosemary, Jacquez, or Parry Jacquez, over at the Co-op, and they asked me to leave. I was kind of embarrassed, you know? I was trying to present it and we were talking and some woman said, this is totally inappropriate. So I packed up my stuff and left. But then I heard from somebody at that meeting, it was Aaron, I don't think he's here, but he said she brought up a totally different subject that most of the people were there to hear, you know, our plans.
Let me be clear. The meeting I'm suggesting, the planning, I want the planning board at least to be in a dialogue with neighbors around what the planning principles are.
Yeah.
What the comprehensive plan is, right? It's that discussion, not a discussion on.
What governs us.
You know, good idea by today. It's clear, right? Residents living there right now do not want to see a change that creates any kind of connection. That's clear. That's well heard. There's a set of principles that we plan by that tell us that the connection is the right thing to do. It's that technical dialogue. That's all, that's all, that's all we're looking at, right? Because we can't have it now and we can't have it like this. So let's have it in a, for where we can have it.
I'm just looking at my timetable because I'm saying, the writing's on the wall, okay? You have the, your jurisdiction to, to follow the comprehensive plan, so follow it.
Something I wanted to note, and I know that this was kind of new to me too, that for average density developments, our recommendation, the planning board's recommendation is a little bit different than our typical ones. We have to make a specific finding in the report with regards to that the development's not detrimental to the health, safety or general welfare of the persons residing in the vicinity or, you know, within its immediate proximity. And then also our recommendation regarding its conformity to the comprehensive plan. So I think the purpose of our code, which says that we have to make a recommendation and report to the town board within a reasonable period of time following the planning board's public hearing, is so that our, the recommendation of the planning board is presumably taking into account the information at the public hearing from those neighbors. So while we could have, couldn't we have these open forum discussions after or during, throughout this process?
Yeah.
That's what I'm.
On a Saturday.
If I interpret this as a, I mean, not that there is a complete deadline, but that we would want to call for a public hearing on the special use permit, the March 24th meeting. Because then the public hearing from the town board wouldn't be until the end of April. So that means the top, planning board would meet the Monday before the town board regular meeting. No action would be taken. But I mean, that's putting this out two months already for another public hearing.
Can I ask a question of Alexis? Would, looking at my crystal ball, okay? We have a, we have a recommendation to the town board, okay? Town board has a public hearing. The town board votes not to approve my special use, all right, with the connection. Then what happens? Does it come back here? You know, because I could just say, well, I don't want to do this average density. I just want to do 24 R1 lots and not have a special use, okay? And then it's just a planning board decision.
Right.
You know, I don't want to.
But what's gonna happen there? Road, speak for myself. I can say, show me a plan that's got 24 lots. It shows the connection with traffic calming and so on and so forth.
I mean, we could do that right here. We could just take the lot lines and extend and delete the buffer, extend the lot lines.
And we're R1 18,000 square foot lots.
We're there.
That's your choice.
And what I'm trying to.
That's not the application in front of us.
No, no. But what I'm trying to say to the town though is that this has the benefit of the buffer, the bike path and the sewer line.
Yeah.
You know, I can't feasibly put in a 15-inch main trunk sewer line, you know, if somebody cuts my lots in half. Somebody said, well, cut your lots in half. Well, hello. I mean, that 15-inch line's gonna cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, like, how do I afford that, you know, as a builder? You know, so that benefits the whole town, you know? The bike path benefits the whole town. I mean, the connection, you know, I was, I was against this connection because it was kind of like, uh, selfish, you know? I didn't want to see a bunch of traffic in my little loop because I'm afraid that little old ladies that I want to sell to don't want to have all that traffic, all right? But if we connect it up, I see the big picture. I've lived here for many years, right? If we connect it up, let's design it with the traffic calming, all right? And I think we're there. I don't want to keep.
You guys, do I jump in again? Do you have something, Patrick?
But what's gonna happen though is when it goes to the town board, it's gonna blow up.
Well, we don't want to make any predictions on that, but one thing I just wanted to comment is that.
We just gotta work through the process, right? And we have an application in front of us and it's for an average density development. And that's what we gotta stick to right now. That's what we'll stick to right now.
So I think with Mr. Khan saying is that we've had some projects in the past couple of years that have gotten a lot of public exposure. And one in particular, which was Holocaust Memorial.
Right. And before that, it was the cell tower.
Sure.
Right? And so we've had a few.
Before that was Lori Drive with the connection.
Lori Drive was a long time ago.
There was the development that had already been envisioned as part of Hexham Gardens. And the neighbors here didn't want the connection. The diverter went in. And then, gee, they really wanted the connection.
It's like the connection between.
And it got opened up.
I'm sorry I interrupted, but there's a list, there's a list of this paradigm with the planning board and the town even before any of us even came here. That's all I'm trying to just replicate. Done.
And I think, I think to Mr. Khan's point is that the results of that is that the, the end result, even though it did take longer, came out with a much better plan and a much better result. I think that the community is gonna benefit from. Now, I work in construction. Trust me, I move tens of thousands of dollars a day. And I know exactly what delays are and being responsible for that. Uh, but with this, maybe it is worthwhile within this next month timeframe to have another meeting to continue to let residents gather more information via the town or whatever they need to get the information from. And this plan may change. I mean, there's another plan that somebody drew, something different. I mean, there's, there's people looking at this.
Yeah, but that's totally off the board, I mean.
I don't disagree, but the Eiffel Tower probably had 50 plans that nobody ever saw. There's a book somewheres of those plans. But here, I think that there's, there's, there's an answer somewheres here. It may be very close to this. But I think to give it due diligence, and you've been through a number of planning things, this is, you've put a lot more time into this than you probably would with a typical project. But you've vetted out a lot of things which will help your process move quicker down the line. So one month, I think, is not terrible. I would be on board with that.
Yep.
If we wanted to have a meeting, but specifically talking about the planning principles and how it affects the comp.
Right. And one thing is, and that's why, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but then it's a two-month delay because if, if you have the one-month delay to talk about it, then you can't vote until you have a resolution. So that's another two weeks or a month, Laura, or?
Um.
I mean, can you have the discussion and put a potential to vote on the resolution? Can we have a resolution?
Well, like Alexis was saying, the town board's process is that they do a resolution to call for a public hearing.
Right.
And then it is automatically a month away. So, um.
But I'm saying the planning board.
No, I know. So if the planning board wanted to have a public forum, like, so if the town board called for a public hearing in March, it would be on April 27th. It would be on April 28th, sorry. So the planning board would have April 13th and April 27th.
But you have to, you have to recommend to the town board before they start anything.
But we don't make the recommendation until the April 24th meeting. So in March, we're gonna just call for the public hearing. And then in April will be the day in which the public hearing, April 28th, would be before the town board. Town board can take action that same night. They can hold the public hearing open. And so there's gonna be, I think that if the planning board specifically wants to be the host of forum, that's, that's fine. And you have plenty of time to do that. We just, we have an agenda meeting for the town board tomorrow where I would have to explain to the town board that we're gonna have this resolution calling for the public hearing in March, so.
So, so we could have, you're gonna have the resolution for the public hearing on April 24th, the town board meeting.
So we'd call for the public hearing on March 24th. The public hearing is scheduled for April 28th.
So the public hearing with the town, the way it works right now, the public, this plan, the public hearing with the town board would actually take place on April 28th?
That's the earliest you could get.
Right.
And then.
And the town board, the planning board has two meetings in which we could actually issue a resolution on this to the.
Okay, that's perfect. I like that.
Okay, and, but I think our next event is just this dialogue. And so here's, one of the things I'm hoping to come out of this because, forget the disconnections on the table. The community has said that traffic on that street is out of control. So that's why my first thing is gonna be, if we need to get McManus there and we need to get Gavin there and whoever else it is, what are we gonna do to legally slow traffic down? Or drop a whole bunch of cars off the road? I don't know what that answer is, but that's an answer that I think we need to investigate.
Am I gonna be responsible now to put speed tables on Windsor?
No.
No, no, you would not.
All right.
Yeah.
So would you, so I was last, Paul Breck sat in the last meeting. Was there a vote taken that you're going with the plan that has the Windsor connection?
Yeah, essentially, when we called.
Meaning so the Windsor.
We called for a public hearing with that plan.
So with the report, you have to, the planning board will have to make the specific determination that the, the application does not, you know, I just read the standard, to those in the proximity. So there is provisions that say that we, the planning board can require after the public hearing that the developer or applicant submit additional materials. I mean, so I would read that as you still can change your, just, since you didn't formally vote in your report to the town board, you can say originally that application was for a cut through, but based on the two mandatory determinations of the planning board, we require the applicant to submit a proposal without the cut through and then make the recommendation. I'm not saying that that's what subsequently should do, but I think there's a process since you never formally, although you called for the public hearing, you have to be able to answer in the affirmative that there's no detriment to those in the proximity.
Excuse me. I never heard this board ask for a cut through.
Yeah, exactly. Connection.
A cut through, a connection.
And that's based on sound planning principles. It's based on past town experience.
All right, so just, here are a lot of dates thrown out there. We have, our next meeting is the 23rd, right? So we're at the 23rd and the town board meeting is the 28th. And we're talking about the 28th of April, of the town having a public hearing on the proposal that we had. But we need to have our recommendation prior to that public hearing.
Yes, because it will have to be when we notice the public hearing. So March 24th, we'll call for it. We have to notice it 10 days. We usually do it shortly thereafter. And then the notice, it says the plans are on file with the clerk of the planning department.
Yeah, you really should make your recommendation on April 13th because you should have a recommendation prior to the public hearing actually going out to the public.
Right, I agree.
Yeah.
Yes. No, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get down here.
So you would have, you know, right now it's March 9th, so you essentially have a month to make a recommendation. But I think you should target April 13th for a recommendation. It's a reasonable timeline typically. In our code, it references between 30 and 60 days. It's usually 30 as a recommendation to the town board. So I think you're still in that timeframe and it gives us time to call community conversations and hopefully continue a good dialogue with the public, you know, understanding that there's definitely, I mean, I wrote down the same thing that you guys wrote down.
When do you think you can set that?
Could that be next Monday?
Yeah.
Um.
Do you guys ever call for special meetings?
We'd have to.
Yeah, I mean, it would. Yeah, I mean, it would have to be publicly noticed if we have more than a quorum and we're discussing stuff. So yes, essentially it is, yeah.
The 16th.
So that would have to be between our two regular meetings or else on a different night.
Yeah, you could do the 16th or the 30th.
I mean theoretically, we can set it at any date we'd like, right? It doesn't have to be on a Monday or whatever it is, right?
Well, it depends on the venue. So sometimes the town board room fills up pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we do spot have it in the room too, you know?
Well, let me, you know what, I mean, I don't have my calendar. Let me go out and I will throw some dates to you guys and then everybody pay attention. I mean, we can probably blast it, but.
I would go for sooner rather than later.
Yes, sooner rather than later.
Well, I.
Sorry, you can email.
I'm sorry, yeah. And please, at the next meeting, privilege of the floor, email, okay?
And we're heading to a meeting where we're going to be able to talk.
So you can email them to me and I will forward them both to the planning board and the town board. But we do try and keep Robert's rules of order, which is, I know, sometimes very frustrating, but we really try.
So can somebody summarize the calendar of events for me?
I can, I mean, I can, so tomorrow is town board agenda meeting. You do not have to attend. That's just where we talk about what we're going to be voting on at the regular meeting. So tomorrow, I'll add to the agenda that we're going to be calling for, by resolution, the town board will be calling for a public hearing on March 24th. That public hearing will take place on April 28th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM.
But I heard that
And then in between.
The planning board has to make their recommendation prior to the March 24th meeting. We're going to shoot to make it on March 23rd.
No, April 13th.
We'll still be in discussion to have a special meeting. 23rd would be too soon to be able to.
Okay, because the hearing's on the 28th, so the recommendation has to be before the hearing.
Has to be before the hearing and before the hearing has to be noticed within a specific period of time. So early April, which is like April 13th is plenty of time. No, 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 it's just tomorrow's an agenda meeting. So just going to, when we read, it's more of an internal where we talk about.
Yeah, just talking about what you want to have on the agenda at the next formal meeting. It's an agenda meeting. Couple of things I guess we, you guys were, we need to talk about along with this. And that was the, I believe it was, the planning office, the planning office and the county working on the sketch. Did you see that, Joel? The 90-degree turn coming off of Windsor, again, as a potential traffic calming.
Well, my feelings on that, Kevin, is that we already have a 90-degree turn, you know? And what they're essentially just doing is running the road through the buffer area that we have there and then this whole south side of the site, not using it, which is crazy.
The reason for that is because, one, it avoids wetland disturbance and also.
I mean, our plan here avoids wetlands perfectly.
The question is, if you take a look at it, it was only a concept. They didn't take it to the next level of, you know, how many homes and where the homes would be located. It was just a thought. If you were to take that and overlay that on your plan, right? Would you be able to meander the road to make it, you know, again, a less desirable connection? And still get the number of homes, maybe more than what you want it?
Well, I think I could take the stub, okay? And put the right angle in like they proposed and then come down to our loop as we show it. Instead of coming in the middle of the loop, it would be off, it'd be essentially two right-hand turns then, okay? Or two, one, one, two, three, three turns.
Would that be a benefit to you as from a wetland standpoint and avoiding the wetlands as well?
Yeah, but I'd probably lose two lots, I would say.
Would you be able to pick up any lots to the north where the single-family homes are as a result of that? Utilizing some of that property over there that you were.
Maybe we could squeeze it in, Kevin. Maybe we could shift lot number eight and nine. If we shift eight and nine to the left, okay? And then we put the double 90 in, we could probably do it.
Yeah, so my thought, I think you should at least take a look at it because
We'll do that.
if it restricts traffic flow because it's such a tough path to take, right? But it still connects.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the traffic calming, right? You got to come down Windsor and then you got to hang a hard left, you know? And then, you know, kind of meander through this development and back out. Again, it would have the traffic calming effect that we're looking for. Maybe versus a, you know, the speed strip or whatever you call it, you know?
Personally, if I was going to do it, I'd just take the turns quicker. I.
Well, you say that, but.
Because we have the bike path is a nice flow on the bike path.
The bike path doesn't have to go along, you know, where the road is either, right? Part of it it can, you know?
Then then I'm going to have to cross the bike path, I'm going to have to cross the bike path with with a raised path and, you know, not a hard path like the CAC one.
Can we keep the noise down, please?
You know, I'd have to, if I did that, if we crossed the wetlands with the bike path then, without mitigating the wetlands, I mean, the county's whole idea was to avoid the mitigation on the wetlands is to do this double turn around it.
Not only that, the traffic calming because it's such a hard turn, you know?
And the other reason was essentially most of the forest that's left is on the south side and you're making a more usable tract of land that you could like put paths through for the public or whatever. It's more usable to put and actually like.
Are they going to buy that off me then?
That's still, well, no, it's the same percentage that you have. It's just taking that, you know, ring and then just kind of sticking it to the south so that you have a more concentrated track, like lack of.
It doesn't matter about the concentration or how much buffer I'm having. I'm given that much buffer because I achieved 24 building lots with it.
Yeah, I know, I think you.
There's not a percentage in the average density that says that I have to give up any buffer.
Well, the whole point is you get the relief from the zoning code to go 50% less on what the zoning requirements are and provide more community green space. I mean, that's why we sometimes call it a conservation subdivision. So you could have a, be a ring, like you put the ring in and then you do a ring of conservation around the edge. Or you put the mall to the north, avoid the wetlands. And essentially the conservation part now becomes the south where you can have kind of more. And then it's mirroring the park across the street is another.
I mean, we could.
Yeah, the interesting thing too, I know that the north entrance, I guess it would be an entrance because we're proposing a one-way for this loop, right? That's the one that's the most concerned because of the bend on the road.
No, we got away from the one-way by putting the turning median in.
Okay, but that was the area of concern was the north end, right? Because of the.
It was.
Because of the sight lines, right, the bend on the road.
Yeah, but we alleviated the sightline issue by putting in the turning median. So there's only a right-hand turn from that north entrance on the river.
Yeah, I just asked you, you know, keep an open mind, just take a look at the thought there and see if there's some way that would benefit all of us, including, again, the connection and minimizing traffic. And that was the purpose, I think, of the exercise, again, was to minimize wetlands disturbance and also make it torturous for.
Yeah, but.
Well, I mean.
We want to make it torturous, though. That's kind of bothering me that we have to make it torturous.
Well, I say torturous, it's traffic calming, right?
Traffic calming, put a speed table in. I mean, what's going to, so you have two more stop signs.
It's just a concept to talk about.
It's just going to make somebody so mad, they're going to blow through those stop signs. You're going to do California rolls through all of them, you know?
All right, well, I'll make your day because one of the other things that I hear.
Speed table's hard to get over.
Yeah, one of the other things we hear is the, you know, evaluation, okay? And we do have developers come in and it's typical that we ask for at least a, I don't want to say traffic study, but an evaluation or some kind of a statement, right? Now, you made the statement earlier that you have the traffic that's within here, it's going to be redistributed. So, yes, people along Windsor may not be happy because it may be redistributed their way, right? But somebody along Edison or Viewmont or, you know, some of the alternative ways of getting in and out of there may benefit from this, right? So you have some thoughts on that. And there are some measures like the, what you call it, a traffic strip or a rumble strip or a speed strip, whatever the correct term is for that. Things that would mitigate the uses of this or slow people down, all right? So I think we need to document those. I think that's going to benefit you, it's going to benefit us, it's going to benefit the town board. So we need to write those down, all right? And that's something that, you know, we're not singling you out. It's very typical for all developers that come in that we ask them.
Are you saying that you're just looking for traffic calming design?
I need, I guess I'd call it a traffic statement, maybe, that includes the measures taken to minimize the impact on the Windsor Drive neighborhood.
I mean, a major subdivision is going to require some kind of traffic evaluation. You can do it now or you can do it when you come back for your major subdivision. I mean, my recommendation would be to do it now, but.
It's very typical.
Well, it's, Nick's not here, but I already asked him for the traffic study.
Yeah, you have to.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
I mean, there must be a traffic study because I haven't gone to Joe yet in the county, but the county did a traffic study in 96 when they wanted to connect this up.
Yeah, we talked about that, I'm still looking for it.
All right, but the county must have done a traffic study for the roundabout.
Yeah, and he can take those numbers and work with them.
So why don't I use the same, you know who they use? Well, we'll talk offline, but can you tell me who they use and I'll just go to that same person? I mean, if they already have the traffic info for a river.
I think it was Craig Manning, I'm not 100% sure.
But yeah, she can provide you that information. You know, we, you know, anything to help out and to help the public and to help the town board in their decision process and ourselves. You know, but it's good to write it down.
So if I need a study, why don't I just have to do a study?
Yeah, Nick should do a study and then, like Kevin was saying, just take a look at some traffic calming. Like I think the speed table on your road makes, I mean, let's see it, I mean. And then the town board itself, as a separate thing, can evaluate, like Mr. Khan is saying, evaluate the speeding. And I think a lot of that has to do with just the geometry of the road. And we talk about this all the time when we're talking about speeding roads. It's wide open, there's no street trees, it's got a large right-of-way. And it's just a visual corridor. People go where they're comfortable going. And because it's so wide open and there aren't those visual, like, stopping things.
Give all the people on Windsor 10-foot back.
No, I know, so I mean, there's, but there's treatments and there's plans and things that you can do to potentially, to that corridor, just calm it and slow it down. And those are outside of you. So if you do everything you can here and then we go to the town and we say, listen, this makes the most sense for planning, we're going to have this dialogue with the neighbors, we're going to do all that. We have got to do something about this Windsor Road thing. Because, I mean, if we redirect cars from Briar Road to this subdivision that you're proposing, that's the same amount of cars on Windsor Drive. They're either coming from Briar Road, Briar Ridge or whatever.
I don't think that's correct because I think people are going to dump off a river and dump off a ball town.
No, I know, I'm just talking about internally. Right now, when people are coming off at the end of Briar Road, they're driving the entirety of Windsor Drive.
Yep.
And so there's already that open space speeding thing that we've heard about. So that's something that we have to look at.
And that's a torturous path. I mean, you got to come, I don't even know the name of the street, but Chestnut, the Briar Ridge, the Windsor or Edison to Menlo to Windsor. And those are torturous paths and that doesn't slow anybody down, you know? So, I mean, by the time they hit, the real traffic problem is not going to be within Kelts Farm. Or, you know, it's on Windsor.
I think part of this discussion and part of the recommendation to the town board is going to actually get the town board to think about Windsor's that exists today.
Yeah, I'm just trying not to redesign. I think our loop is a perfect.
I understand, it was just food for thought, you know? You might have looked at it and said, hey, this is, you know.
Because the bottom line is the one thing we heard Latin clearly is Windsor is an existing problem.
Yeah.
Without a doubt, you heard that.
Even without this in place.
Actually, it was 21 to 4 was the vote counted.
Yeah.
A fair number of those people still wanted the bike path connection and that kind of thing.
Yep.
Several of them said they were okay with an emergency access for emergency vehicles.
Right.
So it was a little more nuanced than that. But I do have a comment on this unsigned concept plan. It features at least four shared driveways and that's something we've been trying to discourage.
Yeah, I mean, there's some issues with this.
And there are other.
It was just a sketch. The real purpose of that was the road, not the lots themselves, right, Laura?
And mitigating and avoiding.
Who designed it?
I was working with the county on it, me and the county.
Yeah, so took it upon ourselves to try to see if we could enhance the proposal to.
Well, I think the unenhanced.
Which is great, I appreciate the work.
Well, it's accomplishing different things and it's good to discuss it.
There's a note.
Okay, so.
Kevin, one last thing, Kevin, for me is that.
So to reiterate, so. Oh, sorry.
The one last thing for me is Mr. Lee from next door to the north got in contact with me too, all right? And somebody said there's not much land left in Niskiyoua. Well, he has 10 acres, so he's going to be in next. He actually wanted me to take my two lots to the north.
That's a house to the north of your property?
He actually owns the three houses to the north.
Oh, does he?
So he has that six and a half acre piece plus the two houses that go right up. So he owns from the edge of my property to Rembrandt and back. That's 10 acres, a 10-acre parcel. And he wanted to do a loop like I have too, you know? So.
There's no application on that, so.
I know why you guys are selling property in River.
Keep you guys busy for a while.
It boggles my mind. You hear all the complaints about Windsor and then people are buying property in River Road.
Yeah.
So what I see is a work in progress for our next meeting. We're going to try to talk about or have a community session, right? That's what I heard. And that would be an email blast, right, to all residents through the webpage?
Yeah.
So that way, make sure everybody knows about it. That's one way of handling that. And if you're not already registered to the webpage, you can go and you can sign up. So you get communications from the town. I encourage everybody to do that. I've done it and it's great. When there's special events or meetings and at least you get an email notification, especially if there's a special hearing. I know at the Holocaust Memorial, there was several meetings that worked out well. So please register at the town website to get those email notifications. And then the town board on the 28th, well, the 13th, excuse me, the date's mixed up. Town board will call for a public hearing on the 28th. So we'll need to have some action ourselves by the 13th in order to have a recommendation in the hands of the town board for their April 20, or excuse me, their April.
The town board will call for a public hearing on March 24th. Our target date for a recommendation is April 13th. And then the town board will call a public hearing based on that recommendation on April 28th.
Well, they'll call the public hearing and consider that recommendation during it if they take action.
Right.
One thing that might be helpful, since we've talked a lot about the comprehensive plan and how this fits in, is perhaps Laura and I could work on some type of just objective memo with citations to the exact portions of the plan for the next meeting that say, just objectively, you know, specifically it does speak about the Windsor connection. But then just more generally, so that when we're speaking about it, it's not, you know, the people in the public, the town board know what we're referring to exactly. So we could have that prepared for the next meeting and then any feedback we got from the planning board, we could incorporate.
Yep, makes sense to me.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant right now? Do you have anything else for us tonight?
I just, my takeaway is, you want me to look at the double 90, the traffic statement and a traffic study?
Yeah.
Yeah, traffic calming statement, yeah.
And by the way, my kids are streaming this on YouTube right now, I guess.
Yeah, there you go.
Joel, one thing I noted about the drawing concept sketch that Laura came up with with someone at the county, that northern entrance of your loop is a little closer to the Blatnick Park entrance. So I was just wondering if you could provide maybe just a number or an idea of how that would impact visibility.
We, we, Laura's is further to the north. So it's further, it's closer to that, uh, the Blatnick entrance to the pavilion.
So that, that would increase the sightline.
Well, I think the problem with that is, you know, from a traffic standpoint is that it's on the curve. So I mean, we heard, we heard in earlier meetings that you guys didn't like the north entrance at all because it's on the curve. Or so this kind of aggravates that situation by putting that entrance farther up the curve. You, you know, I mean, you'd have to make it one way. You couldn't, you couldn't.
Right. But part of, part of that was, you know, you're going to do the evaluation for the speed of the road and the sightline distance to also, I mean, that's, that's also something we always do, right?
I think, well, Nick had it wrong here. He had 45 miles an hour right now. So I gotta tell him.
Yeah, that's 40.
Did you verify that?
I did not verify that.
I drove out there and there is no sign for 45 until.
To you get down.
Till you get to the crosswalk.
You got it.
That tells me it's 40.
Yep, it's 40.
All right. And I, I, I wholeheartedly vote for 35, you know?
Yeah. And there's, and, and there's no problem. I don't see a problem. Even if you were to take the 45 and have them push that sign further down the road, if they, if the county didn't want to change anything at all, they could at least change where you ramp up to the 45 by pushing that down. So at least maintain the 40 miles an hour longer through, through this, through this area.
Why have 45? I've seen people pass on that, on that 45.
That's what we were talking about earlier is with the traffic.
Double yellow.
Okay.
I'd love to see it 35 the whole length. If somebody who uses the recycling and transfer station on a regular basis, waiting to make a left turn can be really scary.
And Kevin, somebody brought up your issue with the Whitmire Drive. Once, once the wastewater treatment trucks start rolling, you know? You don't want them, you don't want them going 45 miles an hour down towards Whitmire.
It's already, it's already the speed of the road right now. So.
Yeah.
Not on Whitmire on, on the county road. So.
Yeah. All right.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Again, a work in progress. I know. Thanks. Thank everybody for sticking out tonight. We do appreciate, we do appreciate your comments. And we, we do try, strive for transparency the best we can within the, the bounds that we have. We really do. So thank you. And there's more to come. Okay. We actually have, we have more to do.
Yeah, we're not done yet.
All right. Uh, we got some discussion. We're on discussion. Okay. 2220 Crescent Road. I, um, I don't know if there's anybody here for that tonight. Uh, I don't think we have much to talk about really.
No, yeah, she wasn't able to attend tonight. It's just a quick, um, I attached a copy of the resolution for you guys. They passed the special use permit as recommended by you. And then, um, the update is that Frank Herba is working on, um, fully engineered plans with stormwater. And, um, we still, I think probably want to discuss some of, some of Mr. Khan's concerns, which I reattached. And then the other thing was that she had brought up and she's also spoke about it with the town supervisor, which is kind of like a broader thing. But there's a potential that she would be asking for angled parking on the right of way. And I had spoken to another multi, Leslie's shaking her head, another multi apartment owner who would also be willing and happy to accommodate, um, angled parking all along the length of Crescent.
So what do we do now? What's next? Is it just waiting for the applicant's engineer to submit something that we can work on?
We don't have enough, we don't have enough width for angle parking.
You do actually. Crescent is like.
I know, I know. But I mean, I know it's wide, but what, it's, so I need to do the math. I didn't do the math. Someone do the math.
Yeah, no, I did the math. But the thing is, and I think that this is a detriment, is that you lose all the lawn. I mean, that's like all the green space that you have in that little triangle. So you have to do something to mitigate the loss of green space if you're going to do that.
The impact on the families in the single family homes across the street.
I mean, for whatever it's worth, my default is still, my default is still the way the plan is showing right now. And anything future is just regular parallel parking on Crescent, right?
Yeah, maybe you just put parallel instead of angled. Although if you put, if you did it tastefully and you somehow managed to put green space, I mean, that would alleviate a lot of the parking problems that we have.
So we'll, we'll see what the options are, but.
Yeah. So anyway, those, those are just the updates, special use permit granted, waiting on engineering and parking is always an issue.
You know, that's one of the problems with having the zone change in the middle of a road. Very residential on one side. You've got the other side that is sort of mixed residential in appearance. And now you're going full out commercial.
Well, I guess.
Impact is huge.
So I guess some of the issue is that there's actually not enough parking spaces for the multi-use buildings. So they struggle with their tenants, um, and they can't park there overnight. So they end up getting tickets and moving their cars around and it becomes just a very difficult thing for them to manage.
For the residents.
For them, for them, yeah, for those pre-existing non-conforming multi-use buildings. They struggle with parking. Like we hear about, you know, the businesses in the co-op strip struggling with parking, parking, but across in that triangle, those multi-use apartment buildings, or sorry, the, the multi.
Multi.
Family apartment buildings have parking struggles as well.
They're small apartments.
These are commercial use.
Yeah, no, we're just talking about the apartment buildings there. They struggle.
They're small four unit buildings.
They're four unit buildings and a lot of, they have these old garages that don't really fit the cars very well. And they, you know, you know, if it's two, if it's a couple of working couple, I mean, you probably have two cars anyway. And then what the heck do you do with the other car? It's just.
And they're four units, right? In each of those buildings. So potentially eight cars, you know, each unit.
Yeah, it's tough for them. So anyway, that was, um, as brought up.
You have anything else at this time, Mr. Khan, on that? Or just wait for Mr. Herba and the applicant to submit something we can review? Okay, great. Uh, 2764 Troy Road, um, site plan approval for the Animal Hospital. Mr. Austin's not here, but the applicant's here. And, uh, thank you for your patience tonight. I know we had a, uh, left agenda. And.
Yes.
I mean, the bottom line is the, uh, zoning, an agenda statement packet, you know, you notice that the zoning board of appeals, um, modified the denial to an area variance, uh, which they have the authority to do, and they voted on the area variance and granted the area variance. Um, I think the key here, um, from what I saw, I did watch it on, on YouTube and, you know, read the, obviously the agenda statement, uh, is that they viewed it as a, not an increase in intensity, I guess would be the, so that's one thing that it's, you know, as of planning, that kind of kicks it back to us saying, hey, it's not, you know, conservation advisory council kind of stated it wasn't really an increase in intensity. ZBA stated it's not increased intense. So we gotta, you know, ensure that it's not an increase in intensity as part of whatever work we do on the site. So you wanna?
Did you want me to update anything? I mean, we haven't changed the plan since, uh, your recommendation. The only thing that's really changed is the, um, it's not.
Yeah, it's, it's granted the 800, was it 90 square foot building and basically can go.
Dave Brennan's with us tonight, um, our legal counsel, if there's any.
Yeah.
Matters to that.
I guess, and I, again, the only question I've got is, you know, this intensity thing, right? Uh, I know that, um, um, you can tell me off the top of your head, probably current parking spaces on the site as it exists today. Have you, the number of parking spaces?
The way the pavement is, we, I believe we said there was about six.
About six. But they park, you know, other.
Yes.
So what do you really get there?
It's more than that.
Yeah.
Because oftentimes there are five employees that are parking.
Yeah.
So then on top of that, there are sometimes two or three clients coming in.
And how do you manage all that? I mean, is it, is it right there in front or do they park over in front of the residents over there or?
We manage it by precedence because people have been there before.
Yeah.
People that have never been there before will sometimes park in a way that's not conducive to fitting all those people in. But we've never, there is, um, there were tenants in the back on a left hand that residence on the left hand. And we've never had a situation where they have been unable to enter or exit their spot.
Right.
We've had as much as, I would say nine, maybe more than that, but very rarely.
The proposal for a dozen, I believe, is that?
Yeah. I mean, if we, we didn't, we're really not changing, we're just kind of making sure that it's identified.
And the reason I ask, so you say nine, right? And then the proposal says 12. Is that an increase in intensity, you know?
They're really not changing the asphalt. They're striping it. I think six is probably like if they were all gonna park on one side.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with more than nine.
We did that site visit, there was definitely more than six cars.
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah. So I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, we, you know, we address the change in intensity. That's all. And that's one sign uh, of a change is how much parking. If you're adding parking because it's going to be more intense use, then it's not in keeping with, you know, with the thought process of the ZBA or the conservation advisory council.
It's basically, it's not more intense. It's just what fits the pavement.
Yeah. Let me ask this a different way. Uh, the, uh, if you include the addition with the two buildings that connects the square footage, what would be the parking requirement, Laura, in that zone?
Wait, sorry, what was the question?
What would be the parking requirement if we had to do an analysis based on the square footage of the building?
Um.
I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you include the, the two buildings that are being connected, right? I did put her on the spot, even though I said I wasn't. He's laughing. I hear him laughing.
Closest zoning is RP, I think, and it would be medical.
Yeah. But it'd be interesting to see where that lands and whether it's, you know, greater or less than the 12 that's.
Yeah, like one to 200 or one to 150 or whatever.
And you could use that as a, a benchmark on whether, you know, we're increasing intensity or not also. See how that all fits together, right? Yeah.
I, I think that Laura, would you say that the zoning board of appeals when they granted the area variance, so like presumably you'd be increasing the intensity of the use if you went beyond the 890 square feet area variance that was granted?
I don't, I don't like to assume.
Not, not assume, but I think.
If you watch it, I can watch the video. I mean, it's statement, right? Is it that they included? And I just want to make sure that, you know.
So I think that was included because we had talked about precedence and he is very clearly stating that he's not changing the use, that, you know, right now they have like they have vet areas that are substandard and he's going to build standard, um, exam rooms. Um, and like there's a difference between taking, you know, rooms that are like, we saw them, I don't know, 10 feet by eight feet or wherever they are, and then making places where people can wait and separating the animals versus like building two new garage bays and hiring more mechanics. Like, I think they just wanted to make sure that there was a difference and it was being noted that he's just trying to make something that's substandard function under the current way that it can function versus adding something that is really going to increase.
Yeah. And I understand that. And that's why I look at, I'm just trying to look at what things would, uh, people would view or we would view as a change in intensity. So that's why I tripped to the parking, you know, I say, hey, more parking, does that mean more intensity? You know, that's all. But, you know, but we should, so we should take a look at what the requirement is based on a square footage.
Yeah, yeah, I can actually.
See what number we come up with, uh, because I agree with you. It's not six, even if it was six, right?
Definitely.
Because when we, we were over there that day, there was, you know, easily nine cars there. And, uh, you know, we were able to get out of there. Okay. I guess I call that like a peak load probably, you know? But, but if they're, you know, if they're working all day and you have another, uh, partner there, right? You know, your cars are going to be parked there all day, at least the workers. So you need whatever the difference is you need for, you know, the clients, right? So.
Plan here on that board shows how without change in the asphalt, um, uh, area that it could accommodate 12.
So you're really not adding, you're not really adding any pavement. It's, the park hazard, now you're just delineating the park. I guess would be the way to put it.
Although like, we've never really talked about the interior of the existing exam rooms lobby area. Like, would you be keeping those exam rooms? Are you going to convert those into a waiting room? Do you have that planned out yet?
No, we have not gotten that far. Um, it would be my intention, it's possible to increase the waiting room area. Though more important than that could be to get a separate waiting room for cats.
Yeah.
That would be the first priority.
It takes all the fun out of it though.
No, separate cats, they're like cats and dogs.
Yeah. Say no, as I say.
They're like cats and dogs.
It's all the owners.
The owners too. So, um, um, but the separating the cats from the dogs, first of all, just by itself increases space for the dog part of the waiting room. And then also the extra exam rooms means that, um, animals with their owners could go into the extra waiting, uh, exam rooms. So you're furthermore increasing waiting space for the dogs. So whether the current exam rooms would be used to amplify the waiting space for the dogs, we haven't gotten that far. I don't know if it's necessary, but if it were, we, I think that this 890 would allow us to be.
Yeah, I'm not sure how much, how much, I guess.
Well, the 890, I'm sorry, the 890 would give us four more exam rooms. We don't need six of them. One might be a grieving room, you know, after euthanasia or a break room for the staff or whatever. So it is possible. We don't need six exam rooms at all. So it easily could be, um, enlarge the current waiting area by taking one or two of those exams.
Yeah.
But it would have to be reconfigured because it would be a long and narrow waiting room, which I'm not sure how much, it helps a little, but it's still going to be narrow. So that's the problem. You know, someone with their animal has to get around someone else with their animal on their way somewhere else.
Yeah, but you might just want to look at that because if you've got the four brand new, um, exam rooms that are large and are separating the animals, then you have an opportunity to sort of reconfigure that existing exam room to make it more usable. So that the whole project all sort of dovetails in. You can understand what's going on with all the internal space.
Okay. Uh, from a site plan, uh, situation, where are we at? I mean, are we all set with, uh, the submittals?
You don't need a stormwater, right? Because you're.
We're not changing anything. Um, we're actually swapping out a little bit of green in the pit and, um, taking it away. Hard area.
Do you have any visuals on what this addition would look like?
Um, it'll, it will match, match the rustic look of the, I don't know if we'll do brick or not because it's brick. But, um, we'll have the same roof line, same height roof line. Right now there's, uh, steps coming out. Um, so there's a difference in elevation. So I'm not sure. It'll probably elevate it up, but it's just really a corridor with four rooms of it.
So it won't be a, um, access door on the side of this new building? It'll be through to two existing buildings?
There, there may be, that's going to be a building department issue, but we are kind of thinking of having a door on the new, on this.
Like the L part?
This part here.
Yeah.
Right.
Because if he does have separate entrances, he might have, that might be the entrance for the cats and the other one be entrance for the dogs.
That would be on the, one of the existing buildings or the new building that?
The new building.
The new building.
Preferred, that's the thought.
So you gotta get into details.
Correct. Correct.
All right. I'm not sure how much do we need to get involved in the actual layout? Is that something we need or?
No, it's, I do, I think that more just goes to the intensity of use, just understanding, you know, what's going on with the sort of substandard exam rooms versus the new ones. I just looked, professional medical is always one parking space for 175 square feet. So if you look at the exam room lobby area in the proposed building as being like the professional medical.
Yep.
Then you would only need 9.6 spaces. But if you add in the existing surgery building, you'd need 21. So I don't know how you would want to look at that.
Existing.
Existing non-conforming.
Yeah, it's a tough one, huh? So, but if it was, uh, it would say basically 10 spaces.
If you, if, yeah, because the surgery building, you know, you're not really serving people. You've got staff in there and stuff like that. If you're looking at the exam rooms and the proposed new building, you would need essentially 10 parking spaces.
And I think if you were to put 21 spaces in there because of the calculation, that would definitely, uh, seem like an increase in intensity for sure. So I mean, I'm with you, you know, there was a lot of cars there that day. If it's just, it's not delineated and we're just gonna clean it all up and utilize the existing pavement and space. Uh, and just make it more formal. I mean, I guess you can't argue with that, right? So.
And we're looking for 12 defined spaces now?
Correct.
It could be 12 defined spaces.
Does anybody have a problem with that number? I do not.
I don't, but I'm willing to listen or.
Yeah, but where's the 21 number coming from though?
If you add in the existing surgery building square footage, although really there aren't any clients that go in and out of that.
Right. Yeah. So there would should be a basis for not adding that in.
Well, I mean, I mean, the Albany Med building that went up on Union Street, I mean, there's plenty of surgery space in that building and that all got calculated into the parking. Although thankfully we were able to do the shared parking lot at St. Cattery. We wound up with a really big parking lot. But yeah, I mean, you could count it, but I don't think, because it's, I don't think you need to. It's not where people are going and he's using it as a separate use.
Yeah. I mean, I'd rather see, you know, less intrusive to the, you know.
Yeah. I mean, from what I recall about Albany Med, I don't think we needed to actually count it if we did. I mean, I think there was sufficient parking.
We banked some actually.
Yeah, we banked some.
I go to that building all the time and it doesn't fill up the St. Cattery parking lot during the day.
I mean, which of you, is 12 going to be sufficient? Is that going to work for you, 12, you think?
Yeah. Shouldn't be any. And it's as, you know, less intrusive as we can be. We're not, we're really not hitting any.
I guess where we don't want to be is come in, you know, two years from now and say, I need to, you know, get a building fit because I want to add, you know, 10 more parking spaces because things are going well and, you know.
I mean, it's suitable.
I hope it goes well. I'm going to be wrong, but not to, to impact the site and, you know, the decisions that have been made about the area variance and everything. That's all.
Is there a garage for the apartment buildings?
Okay. There are two double bay garages on that ground floor, two thirds of which is used for the business. And one third, in other words, one double bay garage and a room behind it for the tenants.
I, I meant for parking. Is, where, where do the tenants park?
Oh, they are required in the lease to utilize the double bay to the extent that they're able because, um, the plow person in the wintertime needs to be able to clear the asphalt in front of them. And that is almost always the case that they're able to do that. So we stress to the tenants that we need them. We want them to use the garage. So it's rare that there is a car in front.
Okay. So what's next?
The next step is to call for a resolution for site plan approval.
Are we there?
I mean, normally we'd need engineering. Um, and I guess it's kind of up to you guys if you want to see like a kind of a rendering of what the facade, or at least like facade materials, or if we just want to put in our condition, like has to match the building.
Well, you know, we do have the architectural review board. Is it something that we, you know, that they just need to see what you're thinking for the connection, you know?
Yeah, I mean, there are.
Have you done anything yet with that?
There are no plans or elevations, just the fact that looking in that, yes, we can design something. We know what the roof line would look like. Not sure, um, windows, I don't know if things, I mean, if you're, we, we have nothing elevation wise except to try to get it to fit. I don't think brick would be a great, I mean, get too costly with the brick. But it'll probably be some kind of a siding or.
But you've got to do that work anyway, right? And.
When, yeah, at some point.
But our resolution does.
Yeah, your resolution can just state materials need to match existing foundation.
Or it could, it could have a condition that says that it can be reviewed once it's designed by the architectural review board.
But he doesn't need our resolution to do that work, right? I mean, he, this project is a goal based on the ZBA.
Well, we still gotta give site plan.
Yeah, I agree. But I mean, on site plan, we hadn't.
You can grant final site plan resolution, yeah, without that work being done.
I mean, there's no other site work being done, no utilities, everything's existing connecting. There's, um, yeah, I understand.
Everything, if anything is, it's all interior.
Yeah. So what, what engineering review would there be? Would the town engineer take a look at it or the engineering department?
I mean, they do. It's so minimal. It's our, it's our engineering department that looks at this. It doesn't need a TDE.
So as far as, again, we have approval, do we want to have a hook or a condition in there that we at least, uh, see what it's going to look like? I guess I'd look at you, Dave, saying that's a wise thing to do. I guess I'd look at you, Dave, and say, is that a wise thing to do, uh, at least, you know, come in, once you get, you know, it could be approved, you can go ahead, and with your design, and then come back and, you know, let us at least comment on it, I mean, is that something we want to do, or we don't feel the need?
The facade?
Yeah.
Bring it back to the planning board, or send it to the architectural review board?
Architectural Review Board is what I was thinking, but, I mean, again, I'm looking, I'm just suggesting, I don't, you know, I don't know if we need to do it or not. And I'm looking at our experts here to.
I, I, I think it's at least worth, once you guys decide what you're gonna use the material stuff, to meet with the architectural review board.
Would there, would there be a time limit on getting that back to what we want, or is?
No, it would be.
There's a lot more involved, uh, planning we'd have to do to get to that state at this point.
No, it isn't.
It would be the expiration of the site plan approval, so you'd have to do it within the two years of site plan approval.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
And then they would provide, you know, feedback on aesthetics, and it might be very minimal if you can't see it from the road, and just, you know, it may be very minimal. But you never know, thing with, to come back with the roof lines, I noticed some concerns about roof lines, are you gonna match them all up and make it all work, you know?
It's, that's probably the easiest thing, obviously, yeah, at this point. I mean, getting the doorways to, you know, and alignment stuff is a little bit, um, will be a little bit of a challenge, but not much, it's not a big building, so it'll, it'll, it'll fit, it works, and we wouldn't have proposed it if we didn't think it would work, so.
Yeah.
But, um.
But, you know, we have made statements, right, that it wasn't gonna be from the road, we weren't gonna see it, it's minimal, you know, again. So, is that something that we want to do, you think it's worthy, I'm gonna ask you, Dave, since you're involved with the architect?
Yeah, I think that if you, you gotta take it to design development, so you've got the planning, you know, the floor plan basically blocked out, now you gotta connect the two inside rooms, make everything flow together, and then look at what it's gonna look like in elevation. So, if you're gonna connect the, the gables, basically, the top, we'd like to see what that is, and you got two brick buildings, whether you're gonna clad them in siding or something like that, would be something we'd want to see.
Yeah, I just, I guess, don't want to be restrictive to an, has to match the existing facade, or if we could.
I think when they look at it, they'll comment on it, whether, you know, and that's something you, you'd resolve any comments.
I mean, probably the roof, the roof shingling and stuff like that would probably match as much, but the facade itself might be.
I think it's worthy, at least, and is, what, what does it take to do that, besides having the condition of resolution, responsibility applicant? Is that a submittal to the architect review board?
I think it would just say prior to issuing a building permit, you know, the applicant shall.
Meet with the.
Yeah, meet with the architectural review board.
Does that sound reasonable?
Sounds reasonable.
Sounds reasonable.
Final site plan will be at the next planning board meeting.
All right.
Yeah.
You know, Mr.'s not, Mr. Oster's not here, but I guess on his behalf, I would recommend that we have final site plan.
Because if something comes up, we can pull it, but we can put.
Have a tentative resolution for site plan approval, and we'll have that condition in there, and if there's any other standard conditions, we'll include those also, which is just the typical conditions.
So, just, that's all, so it'll just be a resolution the next, next meeting?
Yeah, again, unless something comes up, and, uh, yeah.
That would be the, what meeting was that?
Twenty-third of March. Unless you don't want, unless.
No, no, just.
Push it off, we're okay, we're pushing things.
Just checking on the meeting, that's all.
Yeah, that's good.
You were throwing dates around before.
Oh, I know, I was, I was spinning on that one, it's the twenty-third is our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so, I think everybody's good with that.
Did you want to hit anything?
Yeah, I'm sorry, like, though, I am totally okay with that, because the zoning board had so much public input, but, I mean, you could choose to call your own public hearing if you wanted.
That, that's why I was standing up.
Yeah, uh, Laura, does the ninety days apply, so isn't it ninety days after issuance of an area variance, you must obtain or apply for a building permit?
Um, no, I don't think so, that is only if it's, uh, I think if it's tied into site plan, the site plan overrules, and then you're in your site plan. It's sort of like a shovel on the ground when you get your site plan approval, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I agree, I looked at that provision beforehand, and so it's the, it's the two-year, it, it carves it out if you have to go to Article Eight for site plan.
It's separate, yeah.
Yeah, but my, the reason I was standing up is just to confirm that after, if you, if you saw and watched through the, uh, the public hearing in front of the zoning board, I would just, uh, offer my suggestion that a, an optional public hearing is not necessary for this, I just wanted to confirm that before we left the room. No, and that would be my recommendation, I did watch the, the video, so, you know.
I mean, when I read the narrative, it was clear to me that I don't think we need.
Yeah, and you guys were copying on all the public comment, and I mean, it was very open, I mean, you received the public comment prior to making your recommendation, and there was a large public hearing at the zoning board, I feel like we've, you know, achieved those comments, but I just wanted to throw out there that you do still have the option.
All right, is anyone here requesting a public hearing, let's put it that way? I, I don't, and I think, again, based on the intensity and the, the location and the visibility of the addition, and not, you're not creating a lot of new parking spaces and everything, I don't see the need, you know, it's my opinion.
I think we're good, so I'll bring back the tentative, um, resolution, and we'll take a look at it the next meeting.
Okay, wonderful, see you then, thank you very much. Thank you, thanks for, again, your patience tonight.
See, how, did they call you and ask where to go in the agenda?
No.
No?
It's first in, right?
But we typically always put the discussion item for a public hearing as the very first discussion item, to be respectful of people who are in the audience.
I mean, people were, you know, Miss David was telling us about developers making donations.
To be on the agenda?
No, 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 not the agenda, we're just.
Oh, oh.
So, reports, Dominican Retreat signage, Ms. Robertson?
Okay, that's fine. I just have to, sorry, my mom is watching the YouTube video, I have to go, she's watching my daughter, but, um, just one thing, I think, I do think it would be important for us to have some type of memo for the situation for the town board on the comprehensive plan, because, I mean, and I want to make sure that, like, all of us are on the same page, not, when I say us, I'm referring to you, you, all of you vote.
For Windsor you're talking about?
Yeah, I think we should step forth and be, not in agreement, not like adopting a memo, but sort of like with the leasing case, when I started, I reviewed like all of Rob Hess's memos, and I thought those were helpful, um, that was one thing. Second, I talked to Paul Briggs, and I'm not a voting member, so I don't think, there's no potential conflict of interest, but I just wanted to state for the record that my mom lives on Briar, and I grew up on Pheasant, but I don't really, like I said, I'm, I'm probably described as a very apathetic person, so, but I just figured since it's my name's there.
No, thank you.
I figured you can put it in the minutes.
No, thank you, and have a good night. All right.
Yeah, so Dominican Retreat, we weren't able to squeeze them on the agenda, but they dropped off a package for us. Um, they want to update their monument sign and then put a new sign, you know how they sort of have two entrances?
And council, or?
Yeah, and, uh.
No, no, Rosendale and Troy Road.
One sign on Troy Road, one sign on Rosendale, right?
Yeah, one, so right now, Troy Road one is permitted, but they want to put one on Rosendale, and they're in the R-two zone, it's very restricted, so it triggers site plan review by you guys, it gets a denial, so I'll bring the sign package to you guys at the next meeting, and, um, you know, it.
A resolution for the next meeting, or just a discussion item?
Just a discussion item, but then I think we're trying to get them on the April meeting, so I wanted to just let you guys know, Dominican Retreat, they want some additional signage, um, it's a really big site, and I.
What does Akim have on Rosendale?
I don't know, do they have anything?
See, I don't remember.
Yeah, it's a small entrance.
So, in a lot of our codes, like, in CN and stuff like that, you're allowed to have a smaller sign on a secondary exit, but this one does, can't, because it's in a R-two zone.
It's a R-two zone, you know.
Well, they're not that. Yeah.
Yeah, so, so, it just, it's sort of a long process for a little sign, um, but it is what it is by our code, so.
Yep, if they want to sign, then we'll follow the process, right?
Yeah, prepare you guys on the signage, and then we'll bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay, anything else, Laura? All right, we'll keep it moving, it's been a long night for everybody, I know, Ms. Gold, do you have anything under commission business?
Not tonight.
Mr. Diopino?
Architectural Review Board is having their first meeting, it's Friday.
All right.
And now we are underway.
And is that put on the webpage when that meeting is, Laura?
No, it's kind of just like an introductory meeting, where we figure out what we're doing.
It's not a public meeting, okay, got it.
No business yet.
Talk about their scope of responsibilities, and charter's gonna be, so.
Great, thanks, thanks for helping with that.
Benefit to planning and zoning, kind of, then.
I think so, too.
Sure, congrats.
Yeah. Mr. McParland?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Khan?
I just want to say, on behalf of the chair and members of board, very sorry for the passing of your father, Kevin and I mentioned the last meeting.
That was nice.
Thank you.
Oh, mom, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Scrubby Tennis, Smith Flom?
Nothing.
And I have nothing, except for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Khan, seconded by Mr. Mr. Scrubby Tennis, I'll as a favor adjournment, no, signify by saying aye, aye. Okay, we are adjourned, and, uh, just thank you, everybody, long night, thank you to the staff, Linda, thank you, everybody, appreciate it.